Thank Pam and Avi for joining us this evening. The town has been asking some hard questions, and I think this will be, this dialogue will be really helpful. I'm going to make some opening remarks here, and then I'm going to solicit any further comments from the Finance Committee and if any of the Board of Selectmen want to have comments just before we get started, so you can get a sense of where people's heads are at. I don't want to take too much time with the preamble, so I'm going to cut it off in 15 minutes, and it's right now seven o'clock on the nose, so we'll go until 7:15. Our objective is to provide a forum to address key questions raised by the Essex Town Boards pertaining to the fiscal '24 budget, the trajectory of enrollment, class size and granularity of class size by section, staffing and planning around future staffing, expected capital spending including the turf fields and contingencies for Essex Elementary School. I just want to start out by level-setting everybody here. On February 7th, the school committee passed a budget resulting in an 8.96% increase in the assessment to the town of Essex. This budget breaks down as follows, and I think this is important. 4.53% for the general operating budget, and then there's an additional 2.37%, which is attributed to the discontinuance of using reserves to cover the operating budget, what we'll call the correction, bringing the total assessments to both towns to 6.90%. Then there's another 2.06% due to the apportionment formula for Essex, and that's driven largely by enrollment. So that's how the, that's how you get to the 8.96% number. This increase for an item that is about half of Essex's operating budget puts us over the Prop 2.5 levy limit by 468,000. This results in about a $744 property tax increase for the average single-family house value in Essex. Net-net, it's 6.97% increase for the taxpayers of Essex, and it'll obviously require a ballot and a town meeting vote to do that. I just want to point out that when you decompose the 8.96%, about half of it is driven by a combination of the Essex apportionment and the discontinuance of using reserves. We know we can't control the apportionment formula. It's dictated by the regional agreement, and the use of reserves for funding operations is not a best practice in municipal finance. So I see the real discussion here tonight being around the 4.53%. What is driving this and how the district expects to reduce this going forward? We do know why the 4.53% operating budget has come in hot. Two-thirds of the budget is driven by personnel costs, which have exceeded 5%. I want to be clear in tying the data requests from the Essex Boards to the actual budget. The request for granular data on classroom size ties directly to understanding how personnel is deployed. I don't think anyone here seeks cuts that would adversely impact many students, yet there, there are reasonable questions as to whether the course offerings are too expansive based on the secular enrollment drop we've been seeing over the last decade. As I mentioned, the situation for Essex has necessitated the need for a Prop 2.5 operational override this spring, so it makes this discussion tonight to be really the kickoff of educating residents. I just want to conclude here by reminding everybody what is at stake. If the override fails, this will necessitate a negotiated budget process with the school committee and our town partner, Manchester. Given that about half of our town's $813,000 assessment, that's the district assessment, that increases, about half of that increase is beyond our levy limit. So if you assume that the budget lands at a number even half that amount for Essex to keep us within our limit, i.e. a failed override, that will necessitate about $1.2 million in cuts for the district when factoring in Manchester's apportionment. So I'm no expert in managing a school system, but that would likely have a really disruptive impact on the program. So I just wanted to frame it, and I also wanted to allow for members of the Finance Committee just to make general comments, and then we'll go to the Board of Selectmen, and then I'll turn it over to Pam and Avi, and we can just have a, basically a Q&amp;A, and you can focus in on some of the questions. So I will, I'm going to start down at the end with Jody, and then we'll just, we'll loop around to our right, and then we'll have those online.
Thanks, Ben. Yep. I guess my main concern is that over the last couple of years, there's been extensive discussion about keeping within a certain percentage of budget increase. And it was my understanding, and I know I'm new to the table, but I think you know I'm not new to the process, that we had agreed upon a 3.5% budget increase. And I think that's where I start, is that we're not there. Why aren't we there? I think that, I believe in the district. I was part of forming the district. I want us to succeed, but I want us to succeed without putting people out of their homes in Essex. I want to make sure that people can age in place, that, you know, your children and your grandchildren can live here, and at this pace, it's not sustainable. When I started to crawl back through things, I found in your packet from your budget overview for new members dated 6/7/22, that MERSD manages key drivers and wild cards to maintain agreed upon target of 3.5% spending and assessment growth. In the same packet, develop and deliver a physically responsible budget that strives to balance maintaining educational quality, district goals, and recognizes the confines of Proposition 2.5. So I think we've got to, we've got to sharpen the pencil. I mean, Annie said it at the 24th meeting, you know, talked about sharpening the pencil. The other question I have is, we, we never have the E&amp;D certified when we go into the budget process. And I did some research, and out of the 88 regional schools, more than half of them have their E&amp;D certified in the fall. So I think that it would be a best practice for the school district going forward to have that E&amp;D certified before we go into the budget process. That is, that is taxpayer money, and year over year, and I think probably in the last five or six years, E&amp;D is at least 5% if not more than your total budget. So I, I want to encourage best practices. I want to sharpen the pencil. We, I don't want to play games with it. I think we need to be really clear that we all have the same goal in mind, but we've, we've got to get there without doing the same dance every year, because I feel like I'm, I'm attending the same party, I'm just on the other side of the table now.
Thank you, Jody. Mark, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I have a couple of questions. I think grab the mic. Probably a lot of them. I think it'd be helpful to understand from the committee, the school committee, you know, enrollment trends. What's confusing, I think, for, I think when Jody had mentioned the overall goal of 3.5, that's a collective number, you know, for the district. And what Essex has been seeing is, you know, a tremendous, tremendous increase on a relative basis, based on the way that it's structured with the, the school agreement between the towns. I think that's, you know, that's another aspect of it that, as Jody was saying. And I also think with that, you know, the 3.5% is not, and I, and I think many of us in, in finance understand this, it's not a strategy, it's just a number. And so what's confusing to me is, if you have a declining enrollment, and you're, you're, you have a number of 3.5%, that, that basically implies that your cost per student is well in excess of 3.5%. And so, and then you couple that with increasing teachers. So you have increasing greater than 3.5%. You have declining enrollment, and you have increasing teachers, and it just doesn't, I think if you think about it from people who are further removed from the school district, which I'm not, but I think explaining that to the citizens of Essex, I think is something that's really warranted.
Thank you, Mark. Christopher, do you, did you want to say anything?
Sure. Hi, Avi. Christopher? Got it. Thank you. Thank you for coming, and, you know, I come from this, as I think everybody on the Finance Committee knows, from a slightly different philosophical place, which is, I'm a lot more focused on the value that the schools are providing, and I think we get tremendous value for our money. I know it's really hard to keep to 2.5, 3.5, 4.5, especially when actual inflation is running at 8 or 9% this year. So I greatly appreciate all the hard work you've already done, and I would just also like us not only to focus on the, the cost of the cost-benefit analysis, but some of the benefits. And, you know, a lot of people in this room, you know, I think whenever the school budget gets out of committee and goes to the town, there's tremendous support, and I want us not to forget that as we drill down on some of these questions. And I'm a big supporter of the schools, so thank you.
Thank you. Christopher, Josh?
Yeah, I don't have anything more to add than what's already said, so yield my time.
Okay, great. Mike or Nina, do either of you have any, I think Nina may have, we may have lost Nina. Okay.
Nothing from Mike.
All right, thank you, Mike. I'll turn it over to the Selectmen.
I have no comments.
I just want to thank you guys for both coming. I think that you both have extremely difficult jobs when it comes to the budget. There are so many factors that play in it. And as Chris mentioned, I'm a supporter of the schools, and I think that you're doing as good a job as possible at managing it, and the benefit of the education is top-notch. Thank you.
I would just add, I would agree with Peter, and I'm, I'm very impressed and appreciate your efforts. I think something that Annie said the other night, was it last night? I just want to reiterate that I'm not a, I'm not an educator. The educators are sitting there, right? We're finance people, or business people, or select people. It's not our job to, to edu, to design the educational process. Our job is to try to make the process work within the confines of what we're doing in our town and what, what we're able to do. So I just want to reiterate that. It's been said before, I'll say it again. I was, I was a little struck. I saw, I saw the numbers. You presented the sort of response to the request for data, and it made me think, although it wasn't really as quite as, as granular as, you know, perhaps we were hoping, but even so, what am I going to do with those numbers? How am I going to, to understand why this group of people has a class size of five or less, or, or five to nine, or, or whatever? That's, we need your help, and we're going to need your help a lot when we, when we try to transfer this into a, into a dialogue for the town in order to make our, make our override successful, so.
Thanks, Guy. So Pam, I'll, I'll turn it over to you, and maybe if you could just slide the mic or, or Avi, however you want to lead this up.
And I think I'd like to start with just clarifying some of the comments to make sure we're all talking about the same thing. So I find that often when we get into budget discussions, and particularly around the 3.5, there's, we talked about it before, there's annual growth, there's assessment, and then there's apportionment. And I just want to make sure when we're talking about the 3.5 target, that we're all clear that it's the assessment growth, not the spending growth, and that the spending growth could be higher or lower depending on a given year and the variables of revenue and costs that combine to form it. And then apportionment, I think we all agree, is something that is regional agreement determined and may have an impact on the towns that are beyond the control of the district, other than to lower its budget to then try and negotiate apportionment outcomes, the towns. And I think through collaboration, we've arrived at a position where that isn't the role of the district, but the role of the district is to try to hit an agreed-upon target of 3.5% max in the assessment growth. Are we all on the same page on that? I, because we can, I think we could start a conversation about one thing and somebody may be assuming something else. So are we looking at growth, Jody? Are you looking at the assessment number?
I was looking at budget.
The growth, annual year-to-year growth, okay. Because I think we've got some charts in some of our presentations that show we quite reliably come within that 3.5% over the course of 10-plus years, taking out for the last time we discussed override. So I think we are making good on our obligation to keep the pencil sharp, as you say, and come in each year at a target both towns have agreed upon, understanding that in this particular situation, it's having a different impact as it rolls through the apportionment formula in terms of how Essex needs to manage it. And then my other point of clarification, so 3.5 assessment, when we talk 3.5, that's what we're going to be assuming. The other piece is the E&amp;D question. Are we talking about excess and deficiency specifically, or the totality of reserves being in excess of 5% each year from your assessment?
What, what the DOR certified, so your E&amp;D?
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, sure. I guess first, I just, in terms of the cost to both towns and the target of the 3.5%, I'm just looking at the budget documents, and I'm just going to go backwards. Last year is 2.89, year before 3.50, the year before 3.18, year before 2.85, and the year before 3.29. So that's five years straight, and we can talk about spending, too. Those numbers are a little bit above or a little bit below, but we're, we're really well below that target, and part of the problem is that we're below because we're trying to manage an apportionment for each town, understanding that as the apportionment happens, we get the fact that it could push one town over the levy limit, and that's been part of the reason why we use reserves to offset. I believe there's only been one year where we were over the 5% target, and that was a year where we did use the reserves to reduce that and charge back to the towns as is required. And if you look at the current estimates, we do see the impact based on the current year, what we expect to be certified at, to be dropping based on what has been budgeted, not all of which gets spent, as everybody knows, just because it's in there as a revenue doesn't mean that that will actually fully be, be used. But when you look at our reserve slides, that's based on what we did submit, and typically what you submit is going to be pretty darn close to what comes out. So that's a $1.26 million number for E&amp;D compared to 1.57 the year before. So you can see that trajectory starting to happen there. So last year, we were not over the cap. We certainly expect to be even lower when this number, excuse me, is certified this year.
So with all that being said, we couldn't agree more that we continue to strive to better timeliness in terms of submitting state reports so we can get that number back, or the certified number back in time for budget season.
Yep.
So then, I think other clarifying questions came around, I mean, we can get into the conversation, which is probably the meat of it, what Mark raised about the ongoing discussion and kind of disconnect between declining enrollment, but yet, in some sectors of our budget, some increase in staff. I think we talked about it last year, we can talk about it again. Guy, I'm assuming you circulated the document from last night? If not, I've got copies for everybody on the class side.
No, I didn't.
So we'll just send that around. So I think while our, our overall enrollment is declining, and our general education staff has, we can pull that chart up at some point, has declined.
Is this the one you're?
That one, yep, I got. Can I just keep?
We're going to get copies of that, too, just.
I got, I have copies.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, okay.
And just on, maybe a clarifying question on enrollment declining, is it, is it gender specific, or is it just equal male and female?
I don't know off the top of my head. Relevance?
I'm just, I'm just, I just have a question about, is, does the curriculum take that into account, the balancing of?
So let's start there. We have two separate questions that we've addressed on the table this year. Why might, what do our, out of, what do our numbers look like for students who may be electing to get schooled someplace else, private school, charter school? And then we have a general demographic decline in available students to attend the public schools, which if anyone heard the Healy Call this morning, has been a statewide trend since pre-COVID. It's demographic in terms of birth rate. COVID also had a significant impact on people's choices, but the numbers, even our early childhood numbers, the state's early childhood numbers, are starting to show a slight turnaround. So the enrollment decline that is creating significant change in class sizes and need for staff at the elementary level has been caused by the demographic decline. When we looked at private school attendance over, I think we looked at a seven-year trend, the numbers are very stable, K-8. They are stable at nine with a notable spike in the past year. There, we're talking about a 15-student differential. So not significant enough to cause any impact on overall district enrollment or staffing. We have been managing the over, if you look back to 2007 versus, we're working on a little bit of a project for a regional group that's looking at special ed costs over time, and trying to work with the state around the tuitioning, the 14% cost of living tuition increase that's been levied to all districts for any student attending private schools. We're kind of working with them to look at the, and better understand the special ed trends and how they have an impact on the budget. So putting a pin in that for a second, our overall decline since 2007 to today is really 7%. Our resident enrollment in 2007 is about 100 students more than it is today. So our resident base has not changed, except for this, for the spike that we experienced from about 2010 to 2015, for which we went out for an override at the time to try to get a few more teachers to manage that. As the numbers have been coming down and rolling through the elementary school, we've been reducing sections of classes. If you've been to any of these presentations, you've heard me say before, Essex is fairly stable. Historically, we run two sections, so two classrooms per grade level. When we hit the spike, there was a period of about three years where we needed to go to three classrooms to manage what we called the bubble at the time. Memorial is where we're seeing the greatest decline. They historically run three to four sections per grade level, more, more reliably three. And during the bubble, they had two to three sections that were, two to three grade levels that would run in four sections. So our max there was 19 sections, and we're down to 14 going into next year. So if you're asking, have we reduced staffing to address the enrollment decline? Yes, we've addressed it by reducing elementary classrooms by five sections over the course of the past five years. It's, you know, it tracks, you can see that at least the past two years on this sheet here. When you get into the middle school, we've talked a little bit about, we started to get into it a little last night. The middle school, you start to look at class size slightly differently. The middle school is where we introduce students, change classes per subject area. Every teacher needs to be certified in that subject area to deliver content. So for our middle school students, their day is made up of five core content classes, which means a class of 100 would automatically be subdivided into five. So on a, on a headcount of 100, you're going to have 20 students per, per section in that day. Now, that doesn't mean that every section is a flat 20. There's slight variations. If someone needs to be in a class with a co-taught teacher, you might have a class that has 22 and another with 18, but on average, you can subdivide a group of 100 into 20 per classroom. That will again change when you get to 7th and 8th grade, because we're going to introduce some leveling of courses where we offer an advanced math option. So if there are 25 students who qualify to take the advanced math option, that's going to drive down the other courses a little bit, but again, on average, it would be 20 students. I use the middle school example. It gets a little bit more complicated, but yet it's fairly locked in. We are a very small school. Middle school is designed to be a true middle school. It's a teamed environment where the students work with one group. In larger middle schools, you have two or three or four teams of teachers, typically with a caseload of 60, right? So we have a team of five, one team, that will carry a team of 80, or 130 if it grows to that, because we don't have space or ability to add another full team. So middle school, you're going to get some swings. When it, when the numbers are shrinking, it's a real positive for the families who are in middle school at the time, because they get the benefit of small class sizes. Those same families, if they had kids in the system a few years back, were in classes of 28 or 32. And we went through that, and we worked with our families at that time to understand that we just didn't have the resources, the space, or the ability to add another full team to bring those numbers down. Getting to the high school, it's a little harder to keep track, and that chart will show you. The high school is designed to fulfill a program. Every year, we approve a program of studies. That's the course offerings that we're going to be providing students for the following year. Students are enrolling in those courses now. Students at the high school are expected to take six to seven courses per year. Those six to seven courses flow over a seven-day rotating drop schedule, not making it up to be complicated, it's just, they're in five or six classes in a given day. So basically, if you think about a class of 20, you'd need 1.2 teachers to 1.4 teachers to cover every student high school schedule. So you automatically are going to have a larger staffing need at the high school because of the breadth of your program. So when you get into the chart, that's before you tonight, you're going to see that we have classes all over the map. We have classes over 24, we have classes under 5. It's never by design that we're looking to offer classes under 5, and we're always trying to encourage students to, to, to take courses and to plan ahead for courses. Where we find ourselves now is that the breadth of our course offerings, and the fact that we are small and can't offer multiple opportunities for some courses to be offered, take for example, well, our Sound Waves course or our, our AP Physics course. We will have enough, maybe at eight or nine students, to run one section of that course, which means if you want to take that course, and it bumps up against another singleton, they want to try to place that singleton someplace in the schedule. So if you qualify for AP Physics and AP Comp Science, or you want to take an art portfolio class, you can also get that.
What does the singleton mean? What does that mean?
Singleton means that it only runs once in the schedule. So if you take US History, the whole class has to take US History. So it's offered four or five times throughout, throughout the schedule. Kids who are taking AP Physics in a given year, you know, an AP course, you'd want about 12 at max. Sometimes we'll get five, six, nine kids.
So it's only offered in one class?
Only one, one section, one time in the recurrence of the schedule. So you'll see on that chart, we have many courses that run only one time in the, in the schedule. So that creates pressure on other parts of the schedule, where a lot of times, students who are looking to take singletons need multiple singletons, so you try to arrange them in a way where they can access as much as possible. So we don't just build out a schedule for students. There's a construct that they're working on. It's a set of offerings that we provide them. But then, within that construct, within the offering that we've all agreed upon going forward in a given year, we do our best to make as many courses available to as many students as possible. Of course, if a course gets no subscription, it doesn't run. In any given year, you could have personnel impacts on the, like, right now, we're struggling between our desire to build the arts and staff the arts. We've had some significant staffing issues that we've been managing, and sometimes the person and the commitment to the program is what draws kids in, so we're seeing a decline in the enrollment in some of our specialty music courses. So now we find ourselves in a conflict between our strategic goals and commitments to build a program, but our inability to staff it in a way that's attracting students. So one of the changes, if you look in the original budget, is we're looking at a music reorganization next year in hopes to generate some funds for a different goal, so no new money, but regenerated money, which will reduce the number of sections offered in music next year. We've already eliminated from the original budget, one head at the high school, that's going to take another five sections out of play. So you're going to have a natural decline as we go through and make adjustments to the program. You won't have an overnight 20% reduction. Well, it's a 7% reduction from 2007, so you're not going to have an overnight 10% reduction in courses. I could issue a directive tomorrow to cap every course at 10. That means every course under 10 doesn't run. So some casualties will be, okay, maybe there's a world history class that kind of was an outlier that only had 10, you know, nine kids in it. That won't run, those kids will get pushed into another class, that class size will go up, but all of the singletons that are caught up in that directive will just be gone. So you will lose examples. So, you will lose examples, Sound Waves, AP Physics, AP Computer Science, Art Portfolio, Green Team, Green Team Scholars, all of the higher-level hand, or hands-on or specialty courses like Authentic Science Research. If we went tomorrow to, to target a ten percent or fifteen percent reduction, those would be the casualties which we have no recourse to go in and repair for our families and kids and provide them with what their expectation is for the coming year. So, I know we've had a lot of conversations about this and I get, sometimes I get a little emotional. It's because the math equation actually becomes a very big programmatic discussion in terms of community expectations about our program and what we offer. So, if it could just be reduced to a formula, I would, I mean, great, that would be fantastic. But, there are implications here, program, staffing, long-term staffing strategy. I'm sure you're all, you know, well aware at this point that any staffing reduction or move isn't governed by me identifying what staff member's going to lose their position. Once we make a cut, it flows through a reduction in force process that's governed by the contract. And while legislation's changed over the years and seniority isn't the key driver, it still plays a predominant role if all other things are equal and people are in good standing. And our staff is good, and our staff is, for the most part, in good standing. So, seniority, as long as they're qualified and certified, ends up being the default. So, there is no simple overnight solution. I think I've talked with Guy and Ben in some of our collaboration. We are looking next year at trying to align the middle and the high school schedule. Their schedules are very similar. High school, I said, is a seven-day rotating drop. Middle school is a six-day rotating drop. But when we expanded in enrollment, there was a time where we had all of our, I said last night. We can debate this on a couple of different fronts, but long ago, we had all of the kids in lunch at the same time in three lunches, which means sixth graders were dining with twelfth graders. I think there's a real concern about the developmental appropriateness of that. As we got larger, the numbers just governed that. We couldn't get everybody in the building into three lunches in a, in a safe and orderly way. And we couldn't share, there wasn't enough staff to share between the middle and the high school. They needed some more specialist staff to manage their load. So, at that time, the middle school started organizing its schedule slightly differently from the high school, and I call it offbeat, right? So, they, they rotate and drop on a six-day rotation, but the timing of the blocks is slightly different. So, A block at the middle school is five to ten minutes off schedule from A block at the high school. So, we couldn't right now share a math teacher between the two levels because their schedules are completely different on any given day. So, we think step one to finding some efficiencies is at least, now that we're a little bit smaller, aligning the schedules and looking for some natural areas where we might be able to maximize attrition by sharing staff between levels. One of the first places we can look for that is in the specialists. So, this would help with our music issue because it would make more staff available at more times to offer some course offerings without having to add staff to get there. So, those are some things that come to mind when I hear, you know, how are you managing the enrollment decline? We're managing it, I think, in a deliberate and methodical way that tries to preserve the breadth of the program, particularly at the secondary level. We've been successful at managing the breadth of the program at the elementary. It's just a little bit more straightforward, and we have taken reductions along the way. Commensurate with the number of students out.
You had mentioned that, did you say two thousand and seven?
Yeah.
To twenty-three, there was a seven percent reduction in enrollment?
Yeah, we went up. We were at one point, we went up and then we came down, but kind of the total in that period.
And then, what was, what's the rate of increase in cost? For the, what's the rate of increase in budget from the same time period?
Charting for me. So, the budget has increased seventy-six percent over that time.
Since oh seven?
So, we, we have, and how do you explain, I mean, I, I would say, and I've been a beneficiary of great school district, many of us have been. But how do you explain when you see that the town of Essex has participated, you know, in investing, what's, a hundred million dollars probably in new buildings in Manchester? And I think top of mind, even though I'm too old to have children that would go to Essex Elementary, but top of mind for many parents are really excited about having a great new Essex Elementary. And you dovetail these large increases with those thoughts. I mean, I go, I go see my youngest son play basketball at Manchester Morrell, it's beautiful. I know that a lot of families in Essex are like, what about, what about us? And so, the concern, which goes into the incremental budget issues that we have on a year-by-year basis, is the longer-term prospects of, and the capital investment that we need to make to demonstrate that we're, I don't, I don't know if the right word is fair, but let's just say, we're getting them a new shiny thing too, which was, we think is going to be wonderful. But I think that's a concern. And I think that, you know, as a town, we, we all have that concern and how do we fit all of these things together? You have these year-by-year issues. And as I think you said, we have a seven percent decrease, seventy-six percent increase in budget over the same period of time. We need a new school in Essex, a lot of people are concerned about that. And then, we have a declining enrollment. And then, on, on top of it, what happens if enrollment increases? You know, so, you know, and those numbers don't seem to all, even in just, without going into rigorous numbers that you can easily do. It's just like a, a theme that's, I would say, confusing.
Fair enough. I think if I took these numbers apart, because I'm looking at the nineteen to twenty-three increase, and that's twelve percent, I think the rate of increase in the earlier years of the district was a lot greater and the annual budgets were closer to four percent. Annual growth, not assessment growth at that time. And since we've been tracking it, that's come down significantly. So, I think the rate of growth has, even while we were going through some of the increase in enrollment, we weren't keeping pace with annual growth with the level of enrollment we had. That's an aside. I think the reality is the drivers of the budget, the ones that Jody had mentioned that she sees in all of our presentations each year, are the, enrollment and staffing are key drivers, but they're not the primary drivers of growth because it's relatively stable. If you look a little deeper into, in one of the presentations, some of the breakout is there. The headcount growth has really been around special education and the need to develop those programs. And the need to provide services that we're mandated to provide to students in our attempt to do so in district to kind of defer, defray out-of-district costs. When I look at our numbers over time there, we are a very steady twenty to twenty-five students in out-of-district, where some of our neighbors are experiencing spikes of ten, fifteen, and twenty heads going up to out-of-district. So, we've been able to manage pretty tightly out-of-district headcount. Out-of-district cost is another factor that's beyond our control because the tuitions are set by the private schools. And we're experiencing that year with the, that, this year with fourteen percent increase. So, majority of our enrollment growth, and in fact, the project that we're working on for North Shore legislators, is the fact that school budget growth is declining Chapter Seventy for districts like ours, right? So, we're all in a hold harmless state where it grows at about one point four percent a year, one percent a year, with a thirty-dollar headcount, right? So, that's not going up. The SOA, the Student Opportunity Act targeted the most needy district, rightfully so, districts with the neediest kids and families. So, we, districts like ours see nothing like that. So, the burden continues to shift. The burden is shifting to smaller towns with the dollars going more and more to urban centers, while at the same time, cost control centers like special education are governed by mandates and formulas that are out of our control. Yep?
What's Chapter Seventy mean?
Oh, Chapter Seventy is our state funding for education. Sorry, so we get, there's a formula by which we get money.
And it's progressive, I think. So, so, as you were saying, the urban districts tend to get a lot more, and our regional gets very little.
Based on the community inputs, which have nothing to do with us, you know, we are a minimum aid district.
We have adverse selection.
Ah, in what sense?
Because we're a smaller district, we, and probably relatively affluent relative to the rest of the state.
Yep.
They, I think what you're saying is that we're getting less of the Chapter Seventy funds or?
Yeah, that's right, the state aid. We get, we get the bare minimum possible, which is thirty dollars per student, which, as Pam said, is about one and a half percent growth, which doesn't keep up with, you know, level services growth rate, which does put additional burden on the towns. And that's based off of town demographics in both communities, not just one or the other.
Is there anything that, with the new tax legislation in the future budgets that will be beneficial in terms of getting more funding because they back into our district or?
They are, they are working on that. So, I think first thing is, the predominant increase is going to urban centers, significantly so. Having said that, there is also a lot of common voices talking about some of the trends that we're seeing. For example, we talked during our budget hearing, Pam referenced the special education cost for added addition, added district tuitions, where the state's program, the state decided that private school programs could charge fourteen percent more. And I think you had mentioned a nine percent inflation rate, certainly well above that. We're fortunate that we've been able to find other savings and use some of the state reimbursements that have been coming to have a decline in that line item. So, this is the first year where we're providing some of that offset. But yes, that's, that's an area where the state is looking to put more money. It hasn't happened yet. We'll see how that, that's one of the things we're going to wait to hear this budget cycle. We don't expect it to change our state aid number. It might turn into a little bit more on the circuit breaker side, we don't know. But we are already, we have offset the burden to taxpayers in two ways. One, by having the in-district programs we've talked about, and that's a huge saving to the community of about a little over a million and a half per year that we would be increasing our taxation to, to the two towns or assessments if we didn't have them. That's heads that we've invested. But also by offsetting the growth in our out-of-district tuitions using the money we are getting as reimbursement in the past couple of years from the Circuit Breaker program. That's another state aid program. So, what we are getting, we're using to offset assessments for sure in many different ways, some of which is investment to offset assessments and some of which is just using the reimbursements to take money out of the budget.
Avi?
Can I just share this? And I can share this chart with you guys. Like I said, we're working on this for a project outside, so this is kind of live work. So, I, I want to check it again, but just looking at this. I, I misstated, it's total student enrollment in oh seven was one thousand three hundred and fifteen students, and our total enrollment as of twenty-three was twelve twenty-one. Resident enrollment was eleven sixty-eight, it is now eleven fifty-eight. So, it's actually less than a percentage point change in resident enrollment from where we were in two thousand and seven. If I look at general ed teachers, we had ninety-five point eight gen ed teachers back in oh seven. Today, we have ninety-eight point three. So, yes, we did go up to adjust to the increase. And also some changing needs from two thousand and seven to today in terms of what we offer for program. But, my, the point we keep trying to make, the special education student enrollment was two hundred in oh seven. It's two hundred and thirty-nine now, or nineteen and a half percent increase. And the staffing was fifteen point three, and it's now thirty-one. That's where the increase in the teachers have come, the dramatic increase in teachers. And that isn't governed necessarily by the up and down of enrollment.
And the state doesn't do something separate that'll help?
No, that's one of the things we're working on. We're asking for, several years ago, there was what they called the Chapter Seventy Commission. So, the funding formula that they came up with, they did it in the, in the nineties, late eighties, mid nineties, and they hadn't changed it since then. So, it wasn't current with how things were actually playing out in schools. So, there was a two-year study with testimony from municipalities, from superintendents, from educators, that the formula wasn't keeping pace with the actual needs of schools. So, they weren't, they weren't pumping enough money in. That's where that Student Opportunity Act came out of. So, a lot of work was done. The assistance targeted mostly at the urban centers. The next wave, what we hope to achieve this year, is the next study, which looks at special education funding. So, a lot of times, we've been talking about our, we're really pretty good at managing out-of-district costs because we're building in-school, in-district capacity. What we're going to be asking for in that, from the state, is for some type of reimbursement similar to a circuit breaker, or some type of an incentive for building in-district programs. So, don't penalize us for developing and investing our own dollars. Give us an incentive or a reimbursement for some of that.
Have other districts done that successfully, or is this sort of?
Built the in-district programming? Many of us have.
Or sought reimbursement for the?
Let me, let me be really clear. As an association of superintendents, in concert with our legislators, we are working on asking them to make proposals to seek funding changes at the state level in special education. So, our hope is that a commission is put together, a study is done, and we can affect some type of an SOA for special education funding out of it. So, again, there's no light switch fixed to this, but we think there's, it's a systemic problem. If you look at our friends in Triton or our friends in Penn Tucket, they are having the same budget conversation we are right now. They're poised for overrides themselves. Penn Tucket had a failed override last year. Towns that are primarily residential tax-based and not, and low qualifiers for Chapter Seventy have this convers, have this conversation every so many years because we do everything we can. We work hard amongst ourselves. We turn ourselves inside out trying to manage the costs, knowing that we ultimately are going to need a catch-up because it's nearly impossible for us to run at our natural rate of growth every year. And that's not natural rate of growth for investment in the program. That's just cost of salaries, cost of healthcare, cost of tuitions, cost of mandated programming. You know, we never get to the conversation, how do we invest in our program? Or how do we reorg, I mean, there was a run where we could reorganize to invest in new ways of doing things. But for the past five or six years, every reorganization has led to a direct lowering of the bottom line. It's a frustration for a lot of people because it doesn't feel very innovative, right? We're not having a lot of time and energy for research and development and how to do things new and better because every ounce of energy is going to, how do we redesign just to squeeze out another few dollars? And that's nobody's fault, it's just the state we find ourselves in.
Can you speak to the recently, I, I realize that that may not have the Ts crossed but, and the Is dotted, but the collective bargaining agreement and where that stands now? I'm wondering, you know, we have the three and a half percent reference point in the assessment growth, and, and I know we're above that this year. Does the collective bargaining resolution impact the feasibility of attaining that reference point going forward in, over the next, at least for the duration of the contract? Because that, that must be a big impact in terms of looking at the, you know?
Note, I, I'll announce what we announced last night, which is we have an agreement in principle.
Not signed?
Not signed. And they haven't moved to ratification yet. So, technically, the ratification vote, I think, is tomorrow. And we'll know for certain, hopefully on Friday morning, whether or not we've completed. I think it ended in a place where we were all in agreement, so I foresee a really positive outcome. And it is, the, the first year is within our estimates. And I think what we're finding, we have good news to share, is that the, the ending healthcare number, what looks to be the ending healthcare rate renewal number, will more than accommodate the growth in the contract for next year. And we've worked with them on each successive year with the target of three and a half. I mean, part of, if you got to go to any of the sessions, part of our process with the team is to continually try to educate to the constraints of the community. They worked this year with an MTA rep who doesn't have a good sense of who we are and how our budgets run. So, we spent a lot of the early sessions just going through the budget documents and going through the presentation so that they understood. So, with that in mind, I think you'll, when the, the documents publish, you're going to find that the annual COLA is in line with where it's been in past years, which means we know what the challenge is. I don't think it makes it easy to stay within three and a half, but what we've talked about at school committee and in budget collaboration, three and a half assessment, if we can come in under it and still offer the quality program, we always will. But the stability of knowing what the target number is each year, not that we want to back into a budget, but at least we know how to manage out-years and how to think about. but at least we know how to manage out years and how to think about um, how to manage attrition, how to manage investments that we may need to make, how to deal with a rising cost in special ed um and how to offset it someplace else. It, it gives us a framework to, to think within and to plan within when looking at all of the facets of our budget. So we will make it. Will it be easy? It never is. But I think we can manage it. I don't know if you wanna?
I guess I would, um, I, I, I agree with everything you're saying. And I think for those of you who may not be familiar with the topic of how does collective bargaining impact our budget and the general strategy, to use your term, which I, I agree with, is, you know, it's clearly a strategic issue. It's our number one cost. And so it definitely will drive the budget. I think we start with two basic principles, which is one, what is comparable analysis show us based on other communities? And you have every contract available and you're looking at those to make sure that what you're doing is responsible, but also fair. And two, how sustainable is the number? And every time we look at it, we put all the FTE and all the people and the projected steps and columns on a, essentially on a name by name basis through various scenarios. And we look at what would the total grid grow? And as you know, the COLA is one aspect of it, but also people move through steps of experience. I think if you take just for example, you know, a master's is the most common beginning entry level and someone who might begin at a fifty-eight thousand dollar salary, a three percent, you know, or two, sorry, two per- two point five percent number uh as a COLA that you've seen for many years. That alone is probably not gonna draw many people into the profession over, you know, twenty-five years of service. So that's where the step increases come in. But we look at everything, every dollar, not just, you know, that COLA, to see what will it do and is it sustainable? So the answer is yes, we will, we will never agree to an agreement that breaks the model, period. Having said that, you know, it's, it's, it's always a stretch. And I think to your comment again about uh inflation and nine percent and fourteen percent and out of district, you know, those are not numbers that we can absorb. So I would say, um, you know, wherever things end up, uh, you know, uh, we're looking at numbers that are fair and sustainable and challenging. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, it's helpful. I mean, and what I'm, what I'm hearing is that you'll have something more definitive.
Terms of total numbers, yeah, we put.
Yeah, in terms of actual.
Yep.
Uh, cause you should be able to model it out over the next couple of years, right?
As we have.
Yeah. Can we go back to the um, the classroom size? Sorry, we keep switching back and forth here. But um, I was just looking at the data here. So twenty-two percent of the sections are under ten students, if I'm reading this correctly. Can you, um, how much of that are sort of like standard courses? You know, STEM versus uh more kind of niche courses or AP? Just like, just speak about them general, generally?
In general, they're singleton courses. And singleton courses are typically what you're calling a niche course. So I would call them a capstone course or a junior, senior elective course, um courses that help to, to round out a pathway um for students for college. Something like a French four, um where we have the seal of bilingual literacy um as a, as a, an offering at the high school. You need to take a certain amount of coursework to be able to earn that. So if we start eliminating, eliminating higher level courses, we're no longer gonna be allowing students to meet that qualification. Um, what comes to mind, I know I've mentioned the physics, AP, computer science, CAD, so um drawing, CAD drawing and engineering. Uh, I think there's a high level Spanish course in there. There's quite a few. Um, a cappella, so the sound waves would be a casualty if we weren't lenient in that category.
That's helpful. I, cause I think the basis of the question was really, and I think you, you were kind of referring to it last night at the school committee meeting, which is, you know, are, are, are we applying resources that are, you know, impacting a relatively small number of kids? So, you know, i- is there an opportunity there? And it sounds like those are still, they may be singleton courses, but I mean, you know, they're still important, is what I'm hearing.
I think they're important for us to maintain the high quality options that we have. Now, that's not to say that there aren't creative ways to try to get there over time. Um, but I think it's going to be a difficult, it's a difficulty for a small school that wants to offer a broad program. It's not unlike, we have a really large athletics offering for a very small school. You know, that, that's another place we could start to talk about whether or not, you know, somebody's gonna see this and I'm gonna get quoted. But we're not having the conversation whether a school on the coast should have both sailing and skiing. We, we want it for our kids and people are willing to pay the fee and the programs are sustained, right? We're not, I think if we were to elevate this conversation, you would hear a lot of different voices talking about the, not, we'd hear from people who want to find efficiency, but you're going to hear very loudly from people who want to make sure that we provide a robust offering to our students.
And that's what I struggle with, cause there's a lot of this which is philosophical, you know, in terms of value for what you're paying for versus, you know, having a really high quality district. I mean, there's trade-offs that you have to make. And that's sort of our job really, is that, that's the struggle we have is, you know, we have the tax, we have the tax burden on our residents and we, we have to make sure that, you know, we can afford what we're paying for as a town.
Exacerbated by, you know, if you take, let's say Brown University versus Amherst College. Can't off, Amherst can't offer all of the things that Brown does and they're both excellent schools. It's just because it's just, Amherst is much smaller and they, it was, you know, it's just designed that way for a right, maybe not a perfect analogy, but we're stuck with two towns that aren't growing a lot in population in terms of like uh ta- incremental taxable dollars. And so what happens is it just gets pushed into an aging population effectively that you were describing earlier. Um, and that, that's a concern that I think you'll see, you've, you've seen over the, the years that I've been involved in these committees. And I know that it's something that, you know, and, and maybe the select board can speak to it, but on the strategic planning committee, it's one of those things that's been a concern, you know, for Essex and it's a small town. And so, and, and this, I don't know, I don't know what, if it's the disproportionality of Essex or the accessibility of Essex relative to Manchester, cause Essex proportionality is going up relative to Manchester. I don't, I don't really know the cause and effect of how that's really happening.
To simplify that, the, the bubble growth, so the growth in enrollment happened primarily in Manchester. So as the bubble declines, the enrollment in Manchester is going down and it's staying a little bit steadier.
And, and, and Pam, and I don't mean to criticize Jody's excellent efforts to get the school district combined, but there is some concept that may be missed in um, in the way the district was formed. And this is not gonna be solved here, but it's almost the eligible students in each town relative to the, the students that are attending the school. It's, you know, that's something also, I don't think it gets addressed here, but it's just something that, trying to figure out how to deal with it. I mean, cause Manchester mathematically has more upward mobile, mobility than Essex. And so more of those children may have the opportunity at a private schools. And that may throw off the, the proportionality in some, in some respects.
Ironically, one of the things we found when we did the private school study, that the largest increase in private school access was from Essex.
It's probably a small number though. Small number over a small number.
Manchester's been pretty stable.
Stable.
And Essex has grown over time, I think maybe reflecting education, uh, sorry, the economic, uh, you know, thirteen years of expansion or something like that, I don't know.
Interesting.
Yeah, but that was surprising. You know, you do these analyses and things pop out that you might not have expected to see.
Yeah, I would not have expected that.
And it, what we saw is, was um, there was a, a more noticeable shift uh at the high school level where you always see families who consider, okay, maybe we'll do public school for elementary and then move it to high school, something anecdotally you might hear. The increase from one to the other was actually um, uh, bigger in Essex, where it's more stable in Manchester, uh, which might be more consistent with the way, maybe what you would expect. But the total increase over the ten-year period was more so in Essex.
Did, did the Essex Tech, Tech kids figure into that mobility too, or is that just private school?
That was just private.
That one was just private school, but we did look at Essex Tech as part of that larger conversation of what was happening.
But that's, that's a, how many students do we have at Essex Tech right now? I was gonna say less than ten.
I think it was about ten.
Go on to thirteen, I think, and there's five more going this year.
So back to the um, the school class size, the um, two sections, the twenty-two percent of sections that are below uh ten students, mainly the singleton courses, correct?
Yes.
Would you say in a um, high school career that most students take at least one or more singleton courses?
At least, almost at least one or more.
Yeah, so they're extremely valuable in it.
Or toward more.
Extremely valuable in a student's career in high school, yeah. Yeah, so.
Is there any benchmarking that you do along these lines of, of these numbers? Could you, could you, so I noticed, uh, I, I think you guys gave me at, at one point a deck and I was looking at special education. You had twelve different districts in the nor- in North Shore in comparison for special ed costs. And we actually came out really quite well. We're, we're, we do very well in terms of the percentage of, of our total budget that we spend on special ed as compared to these other twelve schools. But is, is there also that kind of benchmarking for class size and, and, and whatnot?
Not in the same formal way as special education, cause the special ed is all reported to the state. So the class size at high school is more word of mouth or informal surveying. And we did do some informal surveying of our friends on the North Shore. And I think sixteen was the average class size um at the high school level with, you know, like Marbleheads, Triton, Penn Tucket, Newburyport, others who are on the smaller side, all noting, we're all struggling with a sh- as the demographic decline, but the same offering and the fact that we have more classes on the smaller side. And, you know, what's the solution? So one solution could be team up with another school to offer the course. Um, we need to find the willing school. We need to find a way to do it. I, I think, you know, not to get into all of the machinations of what would happen, but we were governed by a collaborative bargaining agreement. So you can't simply start outsourcing work um that is currently um a union job. So we would have to come, we would have, probably have to negotiate changes. It's something that we could look at. It's conversations I've had with, informally with Rockport. It's a conversation we have on again, off again with Hamilton Wenham. There isn't always the partnership will to actually make it happen. So it starts in concept, but actually bringing it to fruition has not really happened. That's not to say the circumstances aren't going to push us to having to do that in the future.
And with local colleges? I mean, if you, if you're talking about an AP course?
Um, yeah, the AP course is a high school, national high school curriculum, which some colleges will give credit for, but colleges don't offer those courses now. Could they enroll in Salem State and take first year world history? We would be obligated to pay for that.
Ah.
Um, if it's part of fulfilling a credit requirement for the high school.
Right, right.
And I, I think you brought up a, a good point uh on um, when you're explaining how to outsource. And can you speak any, I know that there's been discussions about adding Rockport, you know, at some level. Is that something beyond the scope of tonight, or is, is that something that you?
That's something I threw out there as if we're looking for a really out of the box thing. I don't know how out of the box is, but different ways to solve the problem. If Rockport's struggling with enrollment as well, is there a partnership to be made there? I don't know that that was well received in all circles, but it, and it wasn't, I'm not out there trying to broker a deal. It was more of a suggestion that knowing they're going through similar struggles, is there any interest there to, to take that up? They had asked us if we wanted to participate in a, in a regionalization survey pre-COVID. Um, and we weren't in the position to do that at the time. We were just undertaking memorial school. And I don't think enrollment had started to pop for us as a, as that big of an issue just yet. So that's why Rockport is kind of on the mind. They, they have wonderful music and arts programs. That's an area we're looking to develop. So there might be natural partnerships there.
We looked at Rockport when we originally um looked at regionalization, and he's laughing because we've been around this block before with Rockport, so um.
And they, they don't like us?
No, I think at the eleventh hour, they, they thought it, we sounded really great and we were, you know, this close to a deal. But they had just built their school and there are a lot of, there, there were a lot of hooks there that they, they wanted. Did it, did it come? But I don't think it did.
Because when they, if my daughter was in my class, that would've been the first one impacted in them. And they, when they surveyed the class, how many parents would actually spend the kids, there was zero. And at that point, they had option to be, um, Hamilton Wenham was going to welcome a lot of them in. Right when they did that regional?
No, I think, I think that was a tuition agreement we were looking at, not at the regionalization stand, standpoint. I think it was when we were between Hamilton Wenham and Manchester. Um, yeah, we, we never went to town meeting, but it, it was, it was considered, um, you know, just like we were considering um being the third member town with Hamilton and Wenham. So sometimes it's, it's a great thing and sometimes, you know, a two, two-member district is sometimes great and sometimes it's not. And sometimes you think, you know, it's a third wheel in. So, I mean, I know we're partnering, doing some athletics with, with Rockport. It's, it's not a terrible idea. Um, I also just wanna speak to the um, population and the apportionment issue. I think when we formed the district, um, we were looking at, you know, children participating in the district. We went in eyes wide open, knowing that Manchester's, fifty percent of Manchester's uh population never hits the public schools. That's why you don't see attrition.
That's not accurate.
Well, it was when we started the district. So I don't know what your numbers look like now, but we knew going in that half those kids never hit the public school. So in Essex, it's, you know, ninety-five percent, but so what's our percentage?
Average is fifteen percent accessing um private education in the K eight.
In what, in what?
In Manchester.
Manchester.
In Manchester.
One, one five.
Or is that our total? I'm gonna pull up the report and quote from the report.
It's a much higher participation in the district. Maybe that's because.
Well, we, that's right. We saw a lot of kids coming back to the district when we built the new middle high school. And then, you know, when you bring on another new school, you know, it was sort of the, the, the perfect storm, right? When we built the middle high school, you know, we formed the region, we built the middle high school. And then, you know, the two thousand and eight hit and they all, you know, sort of ran back to public school. And we had a lot of choice students at that point in seats because we had a lot of empty seats. And then we had all of our, our own populations running back to the district. So I, I wanna ask about um, school choice because I'm, I'm concerned. I don't, I don't love it as a revenue stream. I know we keep the money in reserves. Is that correct? Do, does the money go to reserve and then it gets fed back into the budget? What's the cycle there?
No, so I think the first thing to say is the school choice revenue has probably come down by uh, by half since the high watermark. And basically what happened was as resident enrollment was growing, it was an intentional decision to just let students graduate out, which has happened. And then now that things have stabilized and started to decline with enrollment, we've kind of kept it stable, uh, a little bit of an increase in some years. Uh, and, uh, but, so that's the first answer. So it's really much lower than it used to be. In terms of where it goes, it goes, the strategy is that whatever you get in revenue should go to offset uh operational costs in that year. So we try to have those numbers match up. There is, just if you're looking directly at the numbers, you also are getting some reimbursement for kids who might be school choice who go out of district. It's not a huge impact, but it comes in and stays in and then goes to pay those expenditures. So those all get charged to the fund too. So if you're looking at the numbers on it.
I'm not. I'm, I'm more, I'm more looking at the future, at the discussion of more school choice students coming in. Cause what are you running? About five percent of our pop, is it five percent? That sixty, what is it, sixty-eight students right now for school choice? Something like that?
That's right. Sixty, sixty-six kids in the current year. So yeah, so we try to take whatever we get and just use it as a direct revenue offset so it gets spent that year and try to not grow the balance. and try to not grow the balance. There were years in the past where that didn't happen and the balance grew, but it's been quite stable for some time and that's the goal.
And I would say the discussion about growing it is about ten students at this point. So.
Understood.
We were graduating out eighteen students at a time and the mode of operation was to just try to keep that number flat. So we would bring in a new eighteen every year. At this point, we're gradu- because of the ball, it's the end of the bubble classes and we had slowed down, as you said, we're only graduating three school choice students. So one of the points of discussion was could we afford to take in an additional ten for fifty thousand dollars to offset revenue? So it's not having a significant impact on enrollment. And the only place that they'll, they'll go is like right now, we had a, a brief discussion last night that, um, Memorial next year, if we don't have any move-ins, we have lo- fifteen students per section subdivided by three, but if you subdivide by two, you're gonna go up automatically and be over our benchmark and you'll be at twenty-three students. So any new student is gonna start to push up beyond where we would comfortably like to be. So we're not gonna reduce a teacher there, but that would be a class perfect spot if we had school choice, where you could add a student in each section for two and still have plenty of room for any new residents and not, um, you know, not jeopardize the need to have a teacher because you added school choice. We would never do that. I don't know if that was a policy, that was a operation in the past, but we stopped that a long time ago.
No, I know, I think we're, we're looking at a recession and we're looking at a lot of private school kids who may be coming back to the district, which I think.
I just looked it up just so I had it because there's just a lot of numbers running around. So if we're looking at, um, private school attendance in Manchester, because I remember talking to Linda Crosby, who was citing some really big numbers too. We are looking at, um, as low, for, for both towns, it's combined fourteen percent low in kindergarten, twenty percent high at the high school level. And then when you break it out by town, and that's between twenty-twelve and twenty-twenty-two, and this is all online. You can, you can access this. For Manchester, sixteen percent, um, low in kindergarten, twenty-two percent high, um, at the high school level. And then for Essex, it's not too far off from that, eleven percent low in kindergarten, nineteen percent high at the high school level. So you're within a few percentage points of each other for usage of, of private school. And considerably lower than fifty percent of the students going out. So we have about, you know, a high of twenty percent of the students in both communities using private school.
It's actually the good news when you're thinking about a recession and, and having a wave coming back. So it's not what we experienced, you know, in, in oh-eight, I think, uh, in the subsequent years. So it's a little more comforting that you're not gonna have a stampede, uh, coming back.
The big picture for school choice, it's definitely a marginal revenue concept. You don't want to add marginal, yeah, you know, average cost, that would not make sense. So if there's space, you put it in, otherwise, you know, you're not getting enough reimbursement to support a, a whole new classroom. And so we're constantly watching that and Pam, kind of the economist on that one, I just, you know, check the numbers. But I think we both understand that that's something to supplement.
Right, seventy-five percent discount.
Significant enrollment decline, the, the resident move-in was compounded by you had a very high school choice number, um, in the enrollment at the time. Because if I'm looking at the number of fourteen oh-seven and, and eighteen, the total resident decline is seven percent, which means if only point eight-six percent was in the resident reduction, then most of your students lost were school choice had thrown out, which compounds your revenue problem.
Right.
You know, like we don't necessarily want to build it back now, but that revenue out was a direct offset and a debt, a cut to you every year in what you had to come up with in terms of revenue from the towns.
And you, you talked about a special ed headcount number of two thirty-something?
Two thirty-nine and twenty-three.
And there was a, there, was there a jump, a huge jump there? Because on the state numbers, it looks like it went from one twenty-seven to two thirty-eight?
State numbers are not accurate.
Yeah, we had this when you presented something, uh, last year and so.
It's on the Desi's.
It's just on the debt, yeah, and so if you were able, you know, if they were able to show you the data from the spring report, you would see it was just corrected, so that fall report is frozen in ice.
I don't think they've corrected, and Jody's right, the data hasn't been corrected.
They won't.
They won't.
They won't, it's frozen, they won't unfreeze it, we've asked. But we did, several years ago now, it was, uh, fixed in the March report that we did. And so that's why by the next fall, you see the number go up. So it is very misleading and, and just not accurate.
It's hard to benchmark when the government's not updating their numbers appropriately.
And we're gonna, we'll own this. So one of the ways we did save money for a long time is we never hired a data specialist. We had our network admin was also running data on the side. Uh, we had a very lean operation and it caught up with us because he couldn't physically do both jobs and do them well. When he started, he could, but the data demands and the need for instant transfers to the state of everything we do from our student information system was just something we started to fall behind on. So we took advantage of an opportunity of a personnel change to restructure the whole department a few years ago. So he has been great at helping us, uh, generate some of the reports that have been asked for this year and unearthed some of the things that weren't done well in the past. But that's why sometimes what looks like a good savings on paper actually comes back to haunt you in the end.
So, so, um, maybe, maybe backing up to the ten thousand foot level. Let's just say we, we go to town vote and it doesn't go through. What are you guys, and maybe this is rhetorical because I'm sure, uh, you've run a hundred numbers, but are you guys prepared to come up with suggestions as to how to represent a budget? And like, I think last time we talked about, it's like, let's preserve, let's just say you need a music program, you need an art program. Just by way of example. But you figure out, like, let's say those are sacred cows, they can't make nothing to choose there. And so I think what would be also important and just, is just knowing that you are prepared. Because I think you have done this before and you would come up, and the people can fault me, we're running a bunch of scenarios. And so my, the only thing I would ask is, um, just, just make sure we're very thoughtful. If we're like on, on things that you had highlighted were, I, and to me, I think music and arts are incredibly important, so. But just thinking through those options, if, if the town does not vote for an override, I think that's gonna be important, that we have a very thoughtful.
I'm, I think you all know, I'm not gonna put out a cut that I can't stick by and I don't put out threatening cuts. If it's being, it's being discussed, it's being considered because we think it may be, it may be a poison pill, but it, it's the choice that we have to make. So we're gonna make choices that impact students and families the least, but at some point, it's, it's gonna start to cut into the program. So I think we'll take this in two parts. We're trying to do some front work, um, we've got, we're getting our health, final healthcare number shortly and we'll have a revised budget on March twenty-first. That number is breaking very much in our favor. So we think that combined with some.
That's been a tough number to, for you guys, I mean, you've described.
And it's been coming down in stages. And for those, Jody, you may not have been following for the past few years, we had a horrible year post-budget where the final insurance number came in at twenty-eight percent without indication up to that point. So that was just, it was traumatic for us and it was a twenty-eight followed by a sixteen. So we're very conservative, we talk with that broker regularly, Avi's on top of this, um, night and day. But we usually are around, we started at ten, we think we're gonna get down to.
Oh, um, just under, yeah, just under five percent.
A percent increase?
Just under five percent, yeah.
Like the first time in years.
Yeah, but now, now we're like bracing what's next year gonna look like because a lot of times you get the whiplash, right?
What's the next year to drop?
So we think that's gonna work in our favor for revision on the twenty-first. We're learning about some retirements that are coming up that we think are gonna be able to work toward, um, helping us to tune that number on the twenty-first. We also took another look at our Esser grant, which has an expiration date on it, so we may be able to move some monies in there. So we're working on two fifty to three hundred, don't lock that in, but we think we can use the, the latest assumptions to try to revise the budget one more time.
And so that would be before our town meeting and our override, but we would have a revised set of numbers.
We're planning to go in on March twenty-first, school committee meeting. Our goal is to get the number locked down so it can get published in that budget book that we mail out. But we're on a pretty tight timeline for Manchester.
That, that'll be helpful. I mean, as I was saying at the beginning, we're far enough over the levy limit that, you know, and, and any sort of, um, savings that's, can be found between now and then, it's likely not gonna change the scenario that we're gonna have to do an override in the town of Essex. And I think it's, you know, up to us as town leaders to feel comfortable with what we're seeing here. And so, you know, this, this line of questioning for me is very helpful. And I would just point out that if we look at surrounding towns, Ipswich, Hamilton, Wenham, the, the numbers are not that different from Manchester Essex. Their enrollments are higher in Hamilton, Wen- Wenham, Ipswich has sixteen hundred and three. Hamilton Wenham has sixteen fifty-three, we're at twelve twenty-one. And, um, the, if you look at what the town pays on a per-student basis, we're right in the middle of those two communities. So when I look at this, I don't see an outlier situation. What I see is a situation that has a lot more stress in it because of the apportionment. And, you know, again, it kind of comes back to that which, you know, we end up having to contort our town budget around that reality, which, you know, aside from readdressing the regional agreement, there's, there's no magic solution to that, so.
And it's funny because again, I have my regional project in front of me. So Hamilton Wenham was at twenty-one hundred fifty or twenty-one forty-four in oh-seven and they're at seventeen sixteen now. We're, we're all going through the same exact thing. And they had an eighty percent increase in their budget over that time.
I think that the difference between a regional school and, uh, a town school is that when you have, uh, unspent budget money, that in a, in a town school like Ipswich, your money goes back to your free cash. And when you have regional school district, you have E and D and it, it flows back into your reserves account in, inside the district. So for, for people in the town, the member towns, it's a little bit difficult when they hear that you don't want to use the reserves because in, if it was not a regional school district, that money would have come back to the town and then you would have the ability to use that for other projects or reduce a budget. So it makes it challenging to explain to people when your reserves are ten or eleven percent of your budget. It's, it makes it challenging to sell that in a town, especially if you're telling them that their tax, their taxes are going to go up six or seven or eight hundred dollars on an average home. And, you know, and, and much more for others. And I think that we need to keep our eye on the prize. And the prize is that we need to get to Essex Elementary School. And, you know, I like to eat dessert first because I might get full. So I, I want to, you know, work from building Essex Elementary and I want to work backwards on how we're going to get there. And I, I don't want us to trip over things and, and have a, a misstep by having a huge override that may or may not pass. You know, it, it will fly on town meeting floor, but those aren't the people who go out to the polls. You know, they'll go to the polls, but there'll be a myriad of others who will not pass that override. And, you know, we're funding, we want to fund the fields and we have the cash to do that in Essex. But, you know, we may not be able to, residents may not want to swallow six or seven hundred dollars more and then vote for a school in two or three years. And as far as I'm concerned, and I think Annie would agree with me, that the district, the, the, the exclamation point on the district is we've built an incredible district, we've built a middle and high school, we've built a new memorial school, and now we need to finish our promise that we build a, a new Essex Elementary School. And it's, we're negotiating through trying times for people. And in Essex, we have very few opportunities for new revenue. New growth, new home, single-family home growth isn't our answer. Because one child negates the real estate tax that they pay. You know, as from economic development, we're looking at over fifty-five housing because then we'll get revenue without children. But that's a long game for us, so we don't have a lot of wiggle room to go. And we are literally starving our town budget year over year. So it is a huge concern and I will, we're not here to dictate your program, but I am concerned when there are forty-six classes with under ten children in them, that's a concern. I would like to see that broken down further. You know, how many of those forty-six classes have nine students, eight students, five students? Because I think that that, that data is critical and, you know, if we can do it another way, I, I think we need to look there. But I do not want to trip before we get to the, to the end prize here.
I can't solve the enroll, the class size issue in an instant, but we will continue to work it, you have my commitment on that. What we can also work on is the lion's share of reserve spending is actually going directly to Essex Elementary. And the purpose in holding on to the reserves is to be, um, proactive and also at the ready should we have an emergency in that building. But of all of the stabilization dollars that we had from borrowing on the Memorial School, they were all direct investments to make sure that Essex Elementary was on par with all of the new technologies and educational tools that were being put into Memorial School. So while we couldn't address the envelope, we were making sure that they keep pace. So their security systems are on par, so they're just as safe as environment as the Memorial School kids. Their technology is on par with the new technology bought, bought from Memorial. And we're probably gonna need to buy a boiler this summer because we can't afford not, not to keep school open in the middle of winter. So that's a place where we could help articulate the why of reserves and why Essex dollars that go into reserves are actually going directly back into Essex.
Need a new boiler in the.
Well, and before we get to that, I, no, in the current school.
Essex.
In Essex, yeah. So for example.
Borrowed time.
It's gonna be warm.
You may remember too that the, um, our stabilization fund, all that money came from the fact that we were, uh, we did a big upfront borrowing and as the cash was waiting deployment, we earned interest income. And as Pam said, that's gone primarily to Essex Elementary for all the equity and equalization pro- uh, programs. So that investment that people are here are making in the promise, like you said, is, has been flowing back as a dividend to Essex Elementary and the most recent investment from reserves in addition to the playground, which is a substantial investment. And the technology is now the study that we just have concluded, which is expressly designed to say, what do the numbers look like for Essex Elementary? So we can have the best shot possible to get matching funds from the state. So we really get the concept, so I hope as people say, where, how are reserves benefiting Essex? They're primarily going to Essex Elementary to the extent that we're using them. And we're gonna deplete just about all of that mil- uh, million-dollar fund on all of those Essex Elementary investments. A small amount did go to equalization at the high school to update their security to run in line with Memorial, but it's primarily here. So we get it, we're on the same page. And I think it does dovetail a little bit into the conversation about the boiler and about the Habib study that we proposed, which is that the capital needs for Essex Elementary have grown quite a bit. I think what we heard from MSBA when we did the last program was you guys are really doing a good job. We got extra reimbursement points for our maintenance program. So we're not letting any building kind of die in the vine or anything like that. But, uh, when you look at the Habib numbers of what is needed, a lot of things are already past their useful life. Um, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but we do need to have some funding available for emergency items and a boiler is gonna be one of them. That's another great example where in the study, it says, well, you gotta take a boiler out to make place to put a new one in and, uh, then you also have an outdated distribution system. And what we're saying is, yes, what do we need to do right now? And so we're gonna do, you know, we're not gonna let investments that we need get in the way of a longer-term, uh, I don't wanna say dream, hope for the new program and the new school. But, um, yeah, that, that boiler is gonna need to happen ASAP so we don't have downtime in the winter. So we're trying, we get it and we're.
The boiler can't be, how much is it?
A couple hundred.
Yeah.
Habib had like a six hundred thousand dollar number in there or something, but it's not that.
Yeah, they had.
It's just distribution systems and all that.
Yeah, they had, they had, uh, for the distribution, they also had for a removal and also for their number for the actual boiler, um, which involved engineering and soft costs. You know, at this point, we're trying to do. You know, at this point, we're trying to do exactly what we need to do.
Boiler, Annie, yeah.
But we only need it for three years, and then we'll have a new school, right?
That's the hope.
That's, that's.
And you'll take it, and you'll take it with you.
Right.
Yeah, the problem is, and we saw this with memorial school, we were already in the pipeline building and a boiler failed. We were able to get a roll-up boiler. Those are now four to six weeks out. We, we can't put a program, you know, out of commission for four to six weeks until kids see us, you know, come back in a month. We've got a new vacation, so, um.
And we looked, we can't all fit in the one building, I think.
Yeah, so, we're, we're going to do what we can to keep the numbers as reasonable as possible, but absolutely, we, we see that as our primary investment opportunity for reserves.
And we are committed to the promise of the, the first statement of interest will go in this April, um, and we'll get a sense how we compete with other districts.
The only, the only other thing I would just add about the big picture item is we want to also make sure that we don't have a brand-new school with a significantly depleted program inside. So, I think it's really important to do both. Um, and so, we're trying to, you know, do what we can to keep the budgetary growth responsible, but to also keep the program intact so that when the new building comes, we're just as excited about what's inside, uh, and that we don't have to have a new building after, you know, what can take some communities from cuts or failed override many, many years to get back. What we've seen in neighboring communities when something like that doesn't go through. They can be, you know, five to fifteen-year impacts, and it, it, it only gets harder to get back what you've lost. So, we really appreciate any support we can get. Uh, we're trying to run a good program and to run it responsibly.
I'll just, I think Annie would say it best, so I'll, but I'll, I'll, I'll say this. I think having a new school and all the other things that go with that as in terms of extracurricular activities is really the heart of a lot of residents of Essex. I mean, and having, you know, like the school athletics that even, or the town, the town athletics. I mean, all those things are important to us, so. I mean, I don't, Andy, you always said it best, but.
So, I want to allow time for public comment.
Yep.
So, I want to sort of try and finalize questions, comments from the boards before we do that.
Anybody else have anything, Tom? Do you want to get them, if they have any before the board of selectmen go? Nina and Mike?
Yeah, I'll, one, I'll, whatever you want to say, why don't you do it now, and then I'll go to online.
Sure, so, I didn't have comments in the beginning because I wanted to sit back and take it all in and, and just kind of listen to what everybody else had to say. I guess for me, I'm having a little deja vu. I feel like I've sat in the same meeting for the last three years hearing the same concerns. I realize that we are on the high end of apportionment. I understand the formula, I understand the numbers, so I'm not confused by that. Um, but then there are things that confuse me. So, in the last few years, we've had the conversation about finding efficiencies, looking at the program. How are we going to, you know, make it so that it's not such a far reach for Essex to continue to afford more than fifty percent of our overall budget? And, so I guess the one question that comes to my mind, since we know that Pam and Avi, you, you make recommendations to the school committee for budgetary considerations. And so, a year ago, we sat here when the conversation started about we're going to work with you to use reserves, but next year, be prepared for an override. And so, we knew that was coming. This is not a surprise to us, we knew we were going to be here. But if you can speak to the, I guess, what was your thought process on knowing that Essex struggles year over year when we're on the high side of apportionment to afford the bill? And then let's present to the school committee budgets that incorporate add-backs. So, we've cut these things to make the budget affordable. And then when we know we're going for an override, we're going to suggest adding back programs that we struggled to cut because, quite frankly, no one wants to eliminate a class, no one wants to eliminate a teacher. Those are not fun, easy decisions to make. But then, when we're going to our residents saying, we need an override, you're almost adding insult to injury. And I think Pam, you saw that. When this was presented at the first school committee meeting, and I was present and, and my jaw hit the floor, and I went, we're going to be looking at an override and we're considering add-backs? This is not going to sit well with our residents. So, for those of you in the room that hear me speak, meeting after meeting and not at school committee itself, I speak at many meetings, and you will hear me preach fiscal responsibility. I'm not saying we're being irresponsible. But the reason I preach that is because, quite frankly, I'm passionate about my seniors. And I'm passionate about the people in my community that can't afford their taxes. And it's a pretty regular instance where we have residents coming into our town administrator's office actually crying, saying that they're putting their house up for sale because they can't afford their taxes. So, my heart breaks there. It's why I sit in the seat I sit in, and it's why I starve my town budgets constantly. The finance committee members will tell you that I harass them, each of them, about being careful what they fund. Where can we find cuts and efficiencies? So, again, my jaw hit the floor when we talked about add-backs. So, I would like for you guys to tell me what the thought process was in finding those efficiencies, and then when we head into an override year, throwing that out.
Sure. So, the budget we presented as level service is a build forward from last year's level service. Um, immense amount of respect for Essex, but we have two towns and seven board members representing both towns. And I believe that our parents and our board members wanted to see what their options were. So, it's my responsibility to bring forward options and to look at things that we eliminated in the past that were of concern. Um, when we went to town meeting last year, um, in Manchester, we got a lot of on-the-floor concern and pushback and feedback on elimination of Spanish. So, it was a logical thing for us to bring up for discussion. So, the point in bringing four, four and multiple budgets is to elicit discussion at the school committee level, and they make decisions based on that going forward and give the committee options to consider. It's my responsibility to serve not just, not just the need of the finance committee or the asks of the finance committee and board of selectmen in Essex, but to present a product, uh, present a budget that serves the students and the families of the district first and foremost, considers the inputs of both towns, and gives the committee options to discuss.
Can I just add a quantified also piece to that? One thing, you know, having discussed for many years about the enrollment and how it impacts where we're at and some areas where we've needed to add, like special education, whereas the general classroom numbers have started to dip down. The first thing that was in the initial budget, which is still in there, was four teaching positions that have been eliminated this year, uh, which will happen hopefully through attrition. So, that number right there, let's just say a number of eighty-five thousand dollars on, on average, you're looking at about three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars of reductions. That is, I think, a reflection of some of the work we've been doing together over the years to say, where can we find efficiencies? On the add-backs, the foreign language portion is only a fractional, it's only serving one grade. It was eliminated all elementary up through grade six. The elementary reduction is still intact, has not been added back. That's a twenty-eight thousand dollar increase to the budget. Still a small fraction compared to the FTE that were eliminated. The other two add-backs, twenty thousand for the late bus, that's primarily in Essex service. Um, we've heard a lot of back-and-forth feedback. I don't know the right answer, but it will benefit this community. Um, and then the last piece being the fifty thousand for small capital, that is primarily to deal with investments in the building, which is again, going to be primarily towards Essex Elementary. So, I, I certainly understand what you're saying. I just hope that with those four reductions, people can hear that we, we are very much aligned with where there are opportunities to take those efficiencies, we're trying to do that. And I think the dollars of what was reduced is much more significant, and the areas that are added back are primarily going to be benefited here. That's not necessarily intentional, but I do think that there is a lot of value for taxpayers with some of those, and they're much smaller than the reductions. It, it may not make people feel better, but I hope that that underlying detail at least gives you a little sense of some of the strategy and some of the benefits to the community here.
Thank you.
Ben, is it appropriate at this time to maybe talk about the strategy for funding the turf field replacement? I'm not sure if that was handled at this, uh, school committee last night. I wasn't at that, so, there's any information on that?
Sure, one, maybe you could just provide the ten-thousand-foot answer.
Okay, I'm going to look at the clock and say it's eight thirty-nine, and how quickly can I do this so I don't go down a rabbit hole, which I can sometimes do.
And by the way, could everybody online please mute if you aren't already? Thank you.
So, we're proceeding with at least one turf field, uh, which is the Highland field, based on its need. And, um, that, uh, intent to proceed notice will be provided immediately to, after last night's meeting, to the contractors. The bids came in, they're pretty much in line with what we expected. We also have a commitment from the town of Manchester that at town meeting, it's going to pay for its non-district share of Brook Street field. Uh, we went through a, a public exercise of what the usage was. It basically breaks out to fifty percent, looking at many different measures, control of the time as well as actual usage of the time. And so, that's going to happen outside of the district purview. That's just to Manchester for that number. So, what's left for the district to pay for and then apportion out is roughly speaking, one-point-two million dollars, which we then break out through the capital budget. So, school committee has approved the budget for both, um, but we've also, per the bid specs and per constant conversation, put on hold moving forward with Brook Street until such time that we know that we have a successful resolution in town meeting of our budget situation. So, we're not putting in two brand-new turf fields potentially if we do have, let's just say, a failed over and have to cut the program. So, Highland will proceed. Uh, we do have an authorization to borrow as is needed, but we know that that borrowing will be reduced by, A, money that we get straight for the Brook Street, if we get that, uh, project moving, uh, as well as any town has the opportunity to essentially remove itself from a desire to, to bond by paying upfront. So, we know, for example, if there's one-point-two, that will be district money, taking aside the Manchester-Brook Street side, and the Essex number roughly a third, four-hundred thousand. If that's easier to absorb without indebtedness, you have that option. And we've worked with bond council to find ways to do that so you don't have to be paying interest costs if you don't want them. So, we've really looked at trying to listen to what everybody is looking for. The other thing is that if there, if we do go straight through indebtedness, the amount of added debt would be, uh, less than the total reduction that we're seeing. So, we're going to be able to affor, uh, afford two turf fields for less than the cost of what we're currently charging for cap, uh, existing debt service on the middle school, high school. We also did do another analysis that we presented with it. There's a large memo to go, I won't go in much more detail. But we have been saving significant money, um, first over what we presented to town meeting for the, at both towns for the memorial school. Uh, significant savings, I think the number was around twelve million dollars versus the estimate over the life of borrowing. That's probably going to go up as we finish the project under budget and do our last borrowing. We've also saved about two million dollars on refinancing, which happens because we have a good, strong, um, credit rating. So, there are a lot of ways that that's paying dividends. But, back to your basic question, does that hit the basic items?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you just, Avi, since, just for the benefit of the group?
Yeah.
If it's going to cost a hundred dollars to replace both fields, how much of it is going to Essex and how much of it is going to Manchester?
So, I would say, in, in the total number, roughly eight-hundred thousand per field.
Twenty-five dollars. Basically.
Yes, thank you. Twenty-five percent.
Essex is twenty-five percent?
Yeah, it's, it's basically, uh, one-third of.
Three-quarters.
Three-quarters, thank you. One-third to three-quarters.
There we go.
Twenty-five percent.
Avi, last night, did I hear you say that we are going to have a final number before the repayment is due? It sounds like the projects are.
From a timing of bonding, we do not want to bond until we know the final numbers.
Perfect.
We don't want to overborrow.
Thank you.
So, we would essentially, uh, we know we're going to outlay funds for the Highland field because it has to happen and we need to get it done over the summer. Once we, if, hoping that we get positive support from both communities for the budget and can move forward with Brook Street, um, at that point, we'll have, uh, be able to move forward, and then we would, um, bond in the late fall.
I know I've got this question. Could you maybe just talk about the age of Highland field, the age of Brook Street field? Um, and just sort of where they are relative to useful life and that kind of thing for folks?
Sure, um, I'm pretty sure that, and I, I don't have the exact number. I believe Brook Street, Brook Street was put in first. I believe it was put in, in maybe two thousand nine. Uh, and Highland, I think, two thousand ten or eleven, it's a little newer. They have different construction and, uh, essentially, uh, the lines at Brook Street are all painted, whereas the lines on Highland are all seam cuts. And so, uh, they're both past the warranty period, which is eight years, by a considerable amount. And so, that's typically, um, you know, warranty is generally a good indication. People, manufacturers give you warranties based on what they think the useful life is. They don't, you know, so they don't want to pay insurance for something that is going to last longer than the product. So, we've stretched those well beyond that and I think taken them as far as they can go. Uh, they are both safe to play, they've both passed their impact tests for this season, um, this coming spring season. But, with the seams being what they are, we, if you walk the field, it really cannot go any longer, it needs to happen. And I don't, I think we've stretched it more than I wish we could have.
And just, just to ask a question that I think we already know the answer to, but just, why do we keep doing turf fields when the temperatures in this part of the country continue to go up and we don't have grass fields?
No, we did look at that as one of the first questions that was analyzed. And I think the number one reason is just for downtime. Um, for rain is really the biggest one, and I think that's the case. It's not just, uh, rain is really the biggest item. And if you, you know, I live in, in Brookline, for example, you see, you know, baseball season, you have signs on the field constantly, stay off the field, and so you're losing a lot of time for playing. That's one issue. There's also a lot of, of maintenance costs that are a lot higher around.
Higher for grass, that's essentially what I'm getting at.
Yes, yes.
And they're on top of the, the wa, half the water supply in Manchester, Highland. Sitting on top of half of their water supply. I mean.
I think I was, I understood it was actually turf, but I just wanted to make sure that that was still true.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we did have Gail Associates, who's our design firm, walk us through those options, and I, they said, well, we kind of assume that's what most communities do, and we said, we'd like to have that be part of their public presentation just so everyone had the chance to see that information.
And just, one random question. I don't know if you've been on those fields in a hot, like, late spring day?
Yeah.
They're like ten to fifteen degrees hotter, is the technology better for the children? You know, like now?
Well, turf fields do, no, they're synthetic, and they're, so they do absorb more heat, and they will, they will still be hotter. There are other infills that you can use that will not absorb as much heat. And we did look at alternative infills, um, and they were more costly, and they were not very commonly used. So, we tried to go with what we thought was, uh, commonly used and cost-effective.
All right, um, uh, Mike Flynn, I see you're still on the line. I just want to make sure you have a chance to ask any questions or make a comment before we wrap things up with the boards.
My, uh, my esteemed colleagues have asked many of the questions that I had, so, I'm fine. I've learned a lot, and I want to thank, uh, thank, uh, everyone for their time tonight. I, I've learned a lot, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mike. Okay, are we, are we good here? Is there any? Okay. So, um, I will start now to take public comment and, um, we, just go ahead and stand up and, uh, and do we, we should probably, do we need a mic set up, or?
I think I can talk.
You can project.
I've been at Essex Elementary for over twenty years, I can talk a lot of.
Okay. Here, why don't you just, yeah.
Use this one.
So, my name is Dawn Burnham. Um, I've lived in town. I've lived in town for all sixty-eight years. Um, I've watched my parents struggle to stay in their house. Um, I think a problem that a lot of people don't realize is a lot of these seniors have paid for their house, and their expenses are such that they either have to remortgage the house or get a reverse mortgage to stay in the house. But, it's not economically feasible for them to sell their house and move into an apartment because their expenses are going to be so much more. The taxes are the killer. I think all of you need to realize that over thirty percent of the people in this town are over sixty, and over half of them are on fixed incomes. They have no way of getting that extra nine hundred dollars. I am at the senior center three and four times a week, handing out meals, doing mobile markets. And these aren't people that are coming in because, ooh, we can get extra food. A lot of these people. A lot of these people, that is their main source of food, is from the food pantries. And you're now, in the December 22nd, 28th article, we're down 200 kids. In my mind and in those 30, over 30% of this town's minds, when you're down 200 kids, you should be saving money. You should not be asking for a million-point-one more dollars. I am sick to my stomach. I can't, I go to bed at night thinking about this. I woke up this morning at 4:30 and I couldn't get back to sleep because I want to help these people. I'm not in a great position to pay another $1,000 on my taxes, which now are almost $19,000 a year. You people here need to open your eyes and look at the population of the town and how this is affecting them. I am not against education. Like I said, from the time I was five years old, I wanted to be a teacher. I worked at Essex Elementary. I substitute taught. I did one-on-ones. I did cooking programs. I covered a lot of people. I did maternity leaves. I was very ingrained at that Essex Elementary School. And you're sitting here discussing building a new school in Essex. Are you all aware how much older the Essex Elementary School was than the school in Manchester? Because it was a lot older. Yet we chose to build the school in Manchester first instead of fixing the one that is older. I don't understand that and no one's been able to explain that to me logically. I am imploring you, you need to bring this down. This is not going to fly. These people are not voting on it because they're against education. They're voting on it because they're trying to save their lives. They're trying to stay in the town that they love. They're trying to stay in the house that they brought their children up in, that they've entertained their grandchildren in. Essex has a unique situation in that we have stayed small. That was the tagline for the bicentennial, 200 years and still a small town. And part of that is because we have so much wetland. We can't expand a lot of places. There just isn't room. This plan needs to be revamped in a very drastic way because you are going to be killing people because it will kill them to have to leave Essex the town they love. They will never be the same, and you need to open your eyes and not just think about all of these programs and be able to justify to someone who's going to lose their house that you have 30-odd classrooms with five children in it. I realize that we have a high standard. I realize we have loads of AP classes, and that's wonderful, but when that is going to affect people's lives, something's got to give. Something has to give. We are not a private school. We are not St. John's Prep. We are not Pingree. We are a public school, and we need to send a message to you people that are making these decisions that we're not a private school, we're a public school. And all of these extras, which are nice to have, need to be looked at seriously because I am so saddened that to this point, the senior citizens have not been considered at all. And I see them every day and they are struggling, and they need to be taken more seriously. We're voting millions and millions of dollars to take care of our children. Yes, they need to be educated, but we spend less than $100,000 in this town supporting our seniors, and that's not right. It's just not right.
Thank you, Dawn. Appreciate it. Wes?
Sitting down, getting old. I just wanted to bring up one point that maybe, at least from my perspective, you guys have better consider. Partly at the upcoming town meeting, followed by the election. Couple of years back, I remember we got in quite a rile up at town meeting and budget came about this close to not passing. Part of that that I remember was the promise the school committee was going to stick to the 3.5%. 9% is not 3.5%. Sorry. You can do the shell game with, yeah, well, it's only 2.5 here and 4 there and 5.7 here. Bottom line is, is you're asking for a 9% boosting money. And I don't think I can follow my wife any further, but I'm getting on in years, I mean, I'm not in a destitute position now, but I know there's a lot of people that are struggling and there's a lot of them that are going to remember that. Most of them won't go to the town meeting, but they will show up at the pole place. So I would strongly recommend you sharpen your pencil and get ready for the bad side of a 2.5 override.
Good.
See ya.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on. Hi, Sarah Wolf. I'm from Essex, here with everybody else. So I just wanted to say, we moved to Essex 12 years ago, and we moved here, we, we moved here because we grew up in small towns. We wanted to live in a small town. I grew up on a farm. I wanted to live near some fields. We really enjoy the green space. There were a lot of things that brought us to Essex. We would not have chosen Essex if it did not have great public schools, but here we are. And when we came to Essex, Annie Cameron, I met Annie because my realtor said, if you're interested in the schools, you really need to talk to Annie, so I talked to Annie. And Annie said, well, if you're moving here and you're interested in schools, you really need to show up at town meeting because it's really important and that's where everything happens. So we came to town meeting, and we came to town meeting and we realized that there were a lot of people, this was 12 years ago, there were a lot of people moving to Essex at that time. There were a lot of new people, a lot of, a couple of new developments, a lot of new houses. And there were some things that people had been trying to get past at town meeting for a long time that hadn't been passed, but as newer people were coming to town, we were able to pass these things. So first it was Conomo Point, and then it was at the Town Hall, beautiful room that we're in today, and then it was the new Public Safety Building. And so I think that the influx of people who moved to Essex because we have great schools has benefited the town immensely by allowing us to have all these other projects. And so I think we really need to consider that. The other thing I would ask is that we've clearly known for a couple of years that the budget has been really tight. I would really like to ask the Select Board and the Finance Committee to start looking at other ways that we can benefit our seniors, such as graduated tax or other, I don't know, I'm not a finance person, but I do, I have looked into it a little bit and I do know that there are things that other towns are doing to try to benefit their aging populations. And I think we really need to go there because we can't balance the budget by just not spending. We can't continue to reduce all of our town departments, including our schools, year after year. We're going to have to figure out a different way to help our population. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, I just want to comment to that. So the Select Board looks at tax work-off programs and tax credits, and the maximum allowed by the state is $1,500. And to achieve that maximum amount, it's so difficult that every time we look at it, and we look at this three, four times a year, and all of us want to vote in favor of it, but to achieve it is almost near impossible. And we've actually looked at a tax work-off program where we could have seniors work in our certain departments. We've talked to different departments and the time limitations and the ability to train those seniors to do jobs like filing become so cumbersome, we would spend more in headcount and labor for these, for the departments. So we're starving them from increasing their colas and cutting their budgets and then asking them to manage seniors. So we do look at all of these constantly.
Maybe the Finance Committee can, you know, do some comps and sharpen their pencils and dig in a little bit and see what else we can figure out. Thank you.
Thanks.
There you go.
Ginny.
Hi, Ginny Buchy-Intell, Maple Street in Essex. I have a couple of different questions. I am definitely for the school. I believe in education. I'm wondering why we're looking at the school and comparing it to private schools? And the reason I ask that question is, I have a granddaughter who graduated from Danvers, Harvard, Oxford, and Yale, Danvers Elementary. So why are we looking at, why are we comparing a high school to a private school locally? Is there some budget cuts that we could maybe make there that shows the whole town, both towns, that, you know, we could do some cuts somewhere else? My other question is, is the school audited annually by an auditing firm?
Yes.
And they have found no areas where things could be cut or combined that would save money?
So...
It's a financial assistance audit. It's not a...
They're just making sure.
But we do audit our programs. Like, we have a special ed audit, special ed program review, finance, and efficiency is part of it. That's coming up in April.
Okay, okay. Those are my two questions.
May I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
I don't know where the conclusion is coming from, that we compare ourselves to private schools.
I believe that's what I heard when I was listening to the meeting last night, the school committee meeting. I believe that's what was said.
Concern about students leaving to attend private schools?
No, just comparing us to private schools and that's where, that was the goal of the, my take on it was that was the goal of the Manchester Regional School District.
It's not.
No.
And I'm sorry if that got misrepresented.
Okay, thank you.
And just, just to share a very localized example, I shared with a guy earlier that we don't have a good state-reported system of class size comparisons for high school, but we did do a local poll, and Ipswich had shared that its elementary class size level is around 18, middle school 19, average class size at the high school level is 15, high school core level class size average is 15, and their elective course average is nine. That's right next door, similar situation, similar demographics, very similar programs. So that's one local example. Georgetown reports about the same as well, another very small school. So I don't ever mean to give the impri, I'm not sure the line of conversation we were having last night in terms of private schools, but we will work on clarifying that because that is not a point of comparison. It is an issue of concern for some of our members in terms of students who may be electing that option instead. Yep.
Pam, I would just say, just one, one quick clarification. I think when you compare, since I, with your help, I've gone, gone through a ton of numbers. I think the issue when you compare class size and then you compare maintenance, you know, and the other fixed costs, when you're spreading out fixed costs over a broader tax base, the class size comparison doesn't necessarily help as much in assessing the fixed cost of that structure. So by way of example, it's you get economies of scale when you have a bigger school. And so I think that is also another, you know, it's just a, I think you have to be really careful on how you represent the numbers because I understand what you're saying and I agree mathematically, but I think when you spread out the maintenance cost of buildings across a town of Ipswich, and I, I might get this wrong, but it might be 12,000 or 15,000, I forget how many in Ipswich, versus a combined town of eight?
You're talking about the resident pop, tax base.
Yeah, I think what I'm saying is that the class size is only one component of all the cost, and you also have the facility cost, and that does, that can get obfuscated with those sort of comparisons, so.
Fair enough.
Yeah. And fixed cost, to your point, is definitely a reason why some items don't track enrollment because, you know, you're going to have...
Right, for sure.
A principal in each building. You know, you're going to have a boiler in each building and the maintenance costs that go with that. And so as we look at the enrollment and the cost per student, just keep that in mind. It's well, it unfortunately works in both directions.
Well, and the Select Board has also, I mean, Essex has considered to address the increasing proportionality of the school budget, has thought about anything that we can regionalize for some of the services. So I mean, and I think you're hearing some, you know, conclusions from some of the citizens that've come up. So I just want to make sure, I don't know if there's a record here, but at least we're on record that these are, these are issues in terms of those comparisons.
Yes. Thank you.
Hi, and good evening. My name's Anne Buckley. I'm 3 Orchard Road. I'm also a member of the Council on Aging, so thank you all to the Select Board for, for my appointment. I'm very happy to serve. And I would say, just like Dawn, I am spending a lot of time in recent months at the, at the senior center here, a lot of the concerns. And one thing that reels, really a surprise to me, and I think maybe, first of all, I can't thank you enough for the eloquence for each person's conversation, and it was very thoughtful, very much on point, and boy, it was just, it was really very illustrative, I thought, on a, on a very, very wonderfully, it was very clear to hear where all sides of the story are. And as we know, the, the layers, it's nuanced and it's layered. I mean, there's no one, one-size-fits-all answer to any of these questions. They're all, they're all challenging. One number that sort of surprised me as I got more involved with our senior population here in town, of which I am of one as well, was that one difference perhaps from the 2010 timeframe till where we are now as we went through the census, was that the intercept, if I'm saying this right, of the population, the demographic of our seniors has now surpassed the number of, of under 18. So, and those trends are expected to continue to accelerate. So as we look at, and we're thinking a lot about this in our own conversations on the Council on Aging meetings, so we're getting into some very strategic sort of thinking about what are our needs going to be as we try to help contribute to the long-term, the long-range plan. And it has to do with taking a, a look at where are the, where are the needs going to be of that, that demographic of which, so when we look at 50% of our budget being really apportioned out for the school, and because we're all passionate about doing this, and as a community, that really defines us, who, who we are. We've always been that way, right? And so, but what's really clear now is 50% of that budget is now going to be a really big challenge, particularly where the fastest-growing segment, this was the part that surprised me, is over 80. That's our fastest-growing demographic. So if we could take a look perhaps in our numbers here in town, I think in helping us to advance the conversation to where we need to go in order to make the, the budget really work the best that we can, is, is to take a look at, is there some way we can take a look at the, how the impact of the, of the numbers of that change and that growth that's projected, the fastest growth is over 80, and the fixed income there, what's the reality of our ability, no matter what our willingness and eagerness to do it, what's our actual capacity to do it? And I think we're going to find that, that intercept that's happened in the last couple of years, and it's just happened recently. It's not something that, it was probably coming for a while, but when, when you talk about the bubble, we've now got the bubble of the baby boomers who've now all of a sudden are accelerating. So while we still have those who are still working maybe in this, in their 60s, but what happens when we want to get to over the finish line, right, Jody? That, that's where are they going to be, right at the time that we need to go there, as now our 80s have now accelerated even more? So what's our, what's our capacity? So it, it, it's not that what we are proposing here is at all anything less wonderful and desirable than what we've said, but when we take a look at that, those are some of the numbers that I was hoping we might get a little bit more robust conversation on is that over 80, the bubble that we're about to have go accelerating over 65, right at the point that we're going to be needing to come to this point. So with not a lot of ability to expand our tax base that I think we're all in agreement of. So I think I wanted to say, first of all, again, thank you for, for this, and anything that we can glean from this for the council that we can take back and really enhance our conversation, please ask any of you to come join us and let's... please ask any of you to come join us and let's round table around and see where we can go so that we can sort of collaboratively work, you know, that would be great. So, thank you so much again.
Thank you, Anne.
Anne Tenella, actually, and then we'll, Dawn, we'll come back to you, Dawn.
Hi, everyone. Anne Tenella Munez. I live on Harlow Street. I had a few questions for multiple boards. So, the override, Ben, it sounds like that we're going to have to approve an override whether the budget, school budget goes through or not. Did I, did I hear that correctly?
That, that would be my assertion, yeah. Because I think if you, if you track out how a negotiated budget process actually goes, even if it, even if it's brought down, it'd have to be brought down by half to get us under the levy limit from having an override.
I don't think that's true, Ben. I think, I think, I, I think if you, I think you, so there's two, there are two components, and the select board should make sure this is very clear. I think there are two budgets you're voting on. There's the town budget and the school budget because they're bifurcated. It's, it's the way I think it was voted upon, or maybe Jeff can clarify.
Yeah, so it's actually, it's going to be, it's going to sort of be threefold. So, the town budget, the general fund of the town will be one budget. This Manchester Essex Regional School District will be a second budget that will require an override. A third budget that will require an override is the Essex Vocational School. Because that school is adding five new students over the prior year, so that budget is going up about a hundred and ten thousand as well. So, the two school budgets will require both an override vote and then the typical budget vote that they would normally have in a, in a regular year. So, any of the, so, you know, both of the override votes could pass, both could fail, one could pass, one could fail. There's a lot of moving parts. And then there's also going to be a ballot vote for the vocational school and for Manchester Essex. So, you, for an override, you need to have a two-thirds vote at town meeting to pass the override, and then you need a majority vote at a ballot.
Okay. Okay, so that actually partially, that answers the second question. So, so you vote separately on different overrides? Am I saying that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so now for, more for school budget specific. I feel like, and I might not be understanding this correctly, I feel like we were kind of in the same place last year. If someone can explain to me, and that can be either, I mean, anyone who feels like they can explain it clearly, clearest and simplest maybe, what's the difference between the issue we had last year, because it was definitely an issue as I recall, and the issue this year, which feels like a bigger problem?
Simplest answer? Last year, to avoid the discussion or the go-forward of an override, we used money from the reserves as a form of revenue in the budget. Which pushed down the amount that got apportioned between the two towns. To the point where Essex felt comfortable to handle the number.
And this year, we're trying to not do that, right?
And that's what's pushing us into the override. Or, it's not pushing, it's pushing us collectively to need an override, but it's why both towns now are looking at handling the budget in different ways.
Okay. All righty. So, so when we go to town meeting, so I'm sort of looking forward so that we don't kind of have the same difficult discussion year after year, which it feels like, I mean, I know at least last year and maybe the year before, but then beyond that, I can't really remember. So, I, I haven't made up my mind yet, and I want to know maybe from school-specific employees, and then maybe from finance committee and like elected officials and appointed officials, what can you say to me that will help convince me to vote for the budget? And then maybe from my officials, what can you all tell me? Yes or no? If I should, like, if you support, I mean, I don't even know if, maybe I'm overreaching, but I'm, I'm looking for some guidance. And if, I'm, I'm hoping you all can try to convince me. Because I, I want to know why I should increase my taxes when I think we did last year. Well, it wasn't an override, but we, we, we did things last year to pay more so that, you know, we could support our school. Did, am I, I don't even know if I said that clearly.
Good question, Anne. Very good question.
I'm trying to formulate the succinctness of my response. I, I think from the school's perspective, this isn't, we aren't seeking an override for investment in new programming, for the expansion of new things. The, the concepts in the strategic plan are methodology, instruction, and culture. They're not, we don't need to go buy something to do it. What we're asking for in this is funding, it's a catch-up year in terms of, we don't think it's good practice collectively from inputs we get from both our partners, and I think that needs to be reinforced. We have another partner in this, so we're here tonight listening to one perspective. We're in a position of needing to balance that with a, with another perspective as well. So, to try to get to a simple answer, we just need an ongoing maintenance of our level service budget so we can maintain the breadth and scope of the program, which means the basic class size that you enjoy now at the elementary school and the middle school, and the same programming options that are currently available to high school students with the knowledge that Essex is not comfortable with where that is, and we should look to as many creative options as we can in the future while balancing the needs of our other partner. We are just looking for a level-funded budget.
Anne Tenella, I mean, the, the other issue is that we're in this problem of the proportionality is, we'll call it out of whack for, it's mathematically correct, but it's, it's not in our favor for the reasons we were talking about before. We're at nine, we're going to be at almost a nine percent increase, and that's a major reason that's driving the override. Isn't Essex a portion of nine percent, eight point nine, eight point nine six, something like that?
I think that's the right number.
So, I mean, that's part of it, and, and it's, it's just back to the, the way the district was formed. So, we've got a confluence of issues, and so.
Maybe it helps to say, our budget expenditures, the cost of running the district grew at four and a half percent over last year.
Right.
But when we deduct the reserves as a way of paying part of that bill, and then run that bill through the apportionment formula, Essex's act, felt increase is that eight point nine percent. Our budget isn't growing eight point nine percent. It's growing one percent over the three and a half percent goal, in part because we've suppressed that three and a half percent the past three to four years to help get under, keep Essex under the number it wanted to be at. So, really, this is, it's hard for us to come up with a sizzle explanation as to what you're voting for. You're really voting for a catch-up and a reduction of reserves as revenue.
Okay.
That will allow us to keep the same scope of program we have.
Kind of what I would say, is you're voting to keep the program intact. We're not adding to the program. There are some small things that we have talked about, like, as a, as a percentage, those are extremely small.
And those add-ins are to bring that quality up to.
Really, things that we cut previously.
Yeah, I, I got that.
But either way, without them, I think really what this vote is about is do we want to keep the program essentially the same? Or do we want to reduce it to make sure, because of the affordability issue? And I certainly understand and respect that affordability is the backbone of how schools are funded, so we get that. But that's, that's what it's about. It's will we reduce the program for, to hit the financial target? Or will we keep the program essentially the same and, and with an eye towards, you know, keeping it stable?
I mean, Anne Tenella, the part that, and again, you know I'm not an educator, I'm a numbers guy, so the part that I always struggled with was the word level, the words level services. Our level services level is better than others by benchmarking. So, the question is when Pam and Avi say level services, is do you still want to have a better level services than, than the average? And the question is, is the town willing to pay for that better level services or not reducing the services to, let's call it more towards the average? That's the fundamental question. And I, it took me a while to absorb, I mean, because I, level services means effectively, and Pam and Avi, you can correct me, but it's like the, the curriculum level where you have.
The scope of the program.
Scope, thank you, the scope of the program. And I was literally schooled by Pam and Avi. So, I mean, and that's the fundamental question that, yeah, do we balance it? Do we bring it down? Do we?
Yeah.
And it's unfortunate, unfortunately, very disproportionately against Essex in terms of that cost that drives, partially drives the override.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just, to add on that, the struggle for all of us is that it's a structural issue within Essex. You know, and, and the, the use of the reserves, the apportionment, that's effectively doubled the number for our town versus the, you know, four point five operating budget increase. I think the other big piece that I don't want lost is that this is a partnership between Essex and Manchester. And so, if, if this is, if this doesn't work for Essex, then it ends up, in order to adjust the budget to make it work for Essex, and we've gone through this in the last couple of years, it also impacts Manchester. And obviously, you know, we're going to advocate for what's right for Essex, but there is a multiplier effect in that if we want to do, if we want to cut five hundred thousand, just as an example, for, for, from the Essex portion of the budget, then Essex, I mean, Manchester would see a million-dollar cut. We'd be looking at a million and a half. So, there's this multiplier effect in terms of accommodating the town, which, you know, we have the issue of the partnership. And, and so, we have to find a common ground that's going to, you know, work for both.
Structurally, and again, I ask these questions because it is, to me, it's confusing. But structurally, if we vote it down, then the budget doesn't go through, and they have, we have to do it all again. And so, and then the other question is, and Pam and Avi, you have to, is can we cut it so that we don't need an override? And what's that, what's that number we have to do? And I forget the number, honestly, but you can cut it so there's a point at which.
Jeff can give us the number.
You need to give us the number, and then we need to figure out what the, what three times that is and see where that puts us.
Right, so I mean, I, I think that's the other.
I mean, we would need, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of a four hundred thousand dollar cut to our share of the budget, which means you need roughly, you know, a one point two million dollar cut at the school level.
So, that, that's the, that's the issue that, you know, can you make it up in other ways? But is it, are we just solving a short-term issue with a long-term problem? That's, so like, let's just take this year. If we can get four hundred thousand out or one point two for the totals, then we don't need an override.
So, looking to the future then, because I know budget time is horrible, but just in short-term memory, thinking of last year, and now here we are this year. So, if it's a structural issue, like, I, I don't, is there an end? I mean.
Well, it just comes back to, and again, I, I'm spending a lot of time with Pam and Avi. It's level, the level services, you know, is it, that's how you have to adjust it? Or can, is there another way of the creativity, like the Rockport thing? Or is there something that we can find others? And Pam and Avi came up with three or four, I don't remember what year it was now, but you came up with three or four scenarios to, to like try to address it. And I think, and you have to go into, there are ways to do it, but there are some tough decisions, or tougher.
There's another tough way to do it, and I'm not going to be popular for saying this, but I'm going to say it anyway. When the issue started, it is, we have been having this conversation here.
I'm sure, I just.
And at the initial, the onset of the conversation, we were coming in at, or just under three and a half, and that through apportionment was a number that was too large for Essex to bear. And I think the, the real number after you took the percentage off the top was a sixty thousand dollar difference. So, in that year, we made a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in cuts. So, we basically, this has been compounding because we've continued to address the problem and tried to make the cuts or put in the reserves year to year.
And that's the artificial suppression.
Yeah, okay. To account for how it was factoring through apportion, right? So, while Essex may have been feeling a four percent, for these past few years, Manchester would feel a two point eight or a three percent. It had been reversed for many years. So, coming in at three and a half for many years had a real effect in Essex of a two point five percent increase. There was no concern at that point that we were running at three and a half percent or higher. We weren't running it higher, we were running lower. So, this is flipped, it is a real issue for Essex, apportionment has a real impact on your dollars. But the, the reason, the scope of the override is so large at this point is because the reserves have been escalated year over year to cover that gap. And by pulling them out, it's, it's increasing the ask.
That makes sense, okay. Yeah, I am not jealous of that.
If, if we've accomplished one thing, it's, everyone understands how complex this is.
It definitely is complex, and I'm trying to understand. I feel like I have a very tenuous, I wouldn't even say grasp. I don't even know what it is, eyes on it maybe. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Anne Tenella. Dawn?
First time on, thank you.
Sorry, go. I just wanted to answer one of your questions before about the school ages. The Memorial School was built in nineteen fifty-one. Essex Elementary was built in nineteen fifty-seven, so.
I was three years old when I went through the tour.
Okay, so Essex Elementary, I just wanted, just because I think you were concerned that Essex was older. It's a slightly newer building. And the reason at Memorial School, and first, we actually requested from the state to look at both schools for rehabilitation at the same time, and we put in a request for both. The state requires you to show which one has to come first, and it was strictly based off the cost it would cost the taxpayers if we delayed one or the other. So, the cost of delaying Manchester Memorial School at that time would have cost taxpayers more than Essex Elementary because the condition of Memorial School was in worse shape. And it wasn't, despite some people asking about how it was maintained, they were just different construction methods. And the Habib study, which is on our website from two thousand and thirteen, goes into great detail. But basically, I think a lot of people might have the same question of view, is why did one happen first? A, we tried to get them both to happen. B, the, the problems and costs were much higher at, at Memorial School. Now that we're ten years on from that point, those same types of costs we're seeing for Essex Elementary, which is why it's a priority. So, I just hope that helps to answer one of your questions.
It does, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just one more quick thing to Mark's point about big ideas that were floated. At the time, we did a set of focus groups and forums in both communities with the question on the table of, is this the opportunity to combine both elementary schools into one? And it was flatly rejected by both communities. And that's all documented.
And I've talked to a lot of people, because when you built the school and it had three rooms for every grade, in my mind, that was where you were heading. But the original agreement said that you have to have an elementary school in each town, right, correct?
But we did solicit feedback to see if it was worth taking on the regional agreement to change it, to create a combined facility somewhere in the middle or to the Essex side of the middle. But we didn't get any traction at the time.
And then you, there, Dawn, and I, again, I tried this one too. I think we talked about, and I'll mess this up, but like grades kindergarten through third were in Essex and Manchester, and then you have like another one combined, I don't know, a middle, middle school, or whatever it's called.
Upper elementary, lower elementary.
Thank you.
Ben, I want to thank you for being quoted in the paper as saying that this can't be paid for by the taxes continually being levied, which kind of puts it on your board that you need to come up with a solution, that you don't think that's the answer.
We keep looking at them.
And, and, and to follow up what you said when Pam, you just gave the statistics for Ipswich and the classroom sizes. I feel it's not fair to compare Ipswich and Essex because in Essex, we do not have near the businesses. Ipswich probably has ten times the businesses we have. So, they have a much bigger tax base to draw on for their school than we do. And, I mean, we don't, we.
I've run those numbers.
There are some of us that would love to bring in more businesses, but that also was a sore subject here in town too. But that would definitely help our tax rate.
Thanks, Dawn. Yes, Kate? And also, I, I want to make sure anybody online too gets an opportunity to ask.
I'm Kate Koch-Sonquist for anybody who doesn't know me. I am on the regional school committee, but I'm commenting as an individual tonight. I think I'm hearing three main concerns that are being voiced. One, I hear concerns about class size. One, I hear concerns about class size. I'm a data person. I have looked closely at our class sizes. My interpretation of the data is that our class sizes overall are not out of range with average class sizes statewide. But we continue to outperform the majority of districts statewide. We've heard from the experts in the room, our educational experts, that finding efficiencies in these class sizes would mean either cutting programs or consolidating class sections to class sizes that are well beyond those averages. We have zero indication from our other member town that they would support this. And I, to be honest, I don't think the Essex parents would support either of those options either. In my mind, that leaves two solutions. We can increase school choice students, but I am hearing concerns about that as well. Or we could increase resident students, but I'm hearing concerns about that. I'm confused why we would not want to fill empty seats in a classroom if the other options are cutting programs or consolidizing, or consolidating class sections to class sizes that are ridiculously large. There are two solutions available. We have school choice, or we could encourage new families to move to town. I'm actually shocked that we wouldn't want families to move to our town. The second concern that I'm hearing is about the cost of educating students. So, Mark, you talked about the facility costs. I think that's, that's very relevant, right? If there are seats in the school, we're already paying the facility costs. Our cost per student to fill these empty seats is not the same as our per pupil expenditure, right? Those are two completely different numbers. So we've already paid for the teachers, we've already paid for the utilities, we've already paid for the buses, we've already paid for the administrators. These are empty seats. If we fill them, it actually lowers the per pupil expenditure. Right? It's like the airplane is leaving, whether it's half full or whether it's full. If we fill those seats, it doesn't make the flight more expensive.
I think, I think, I'm sorry. Pam actually answered that question for me last-
I know, but I actually, I hear it over and over again. We hear it in public comment. I hear it, I, I don't understand why, if the concern is class size, why we aren't considering all of these options, or why there's pushback about them.
I can do the math for you on that one, if you want me to answer sequentially.
Oh, I can do it too.
Okay, good.
I hear the concerns of our residents, so that's number three, right? Our concerns of our residents about taxes. And I completely understand them. I believe that taxes in Essex are a real-life challenge. I'm interested to know what is being done at the town level to relieve the residential tax burden. I'm interested to know what is being done to find alternative sources of revenue. Mark, you said that the question is, is the town willing to pay for the educational program? I would challenge you to think about our district as a regional district. The question isn't, is our town willing to pay for the educational program? The question is, will the member towns of our regional district be willing to pay for the educational program? And unfortunately, in Essex, we know that we're the minority. Right? And so, Mark, you mentioned that if we vote down the budget, that it stops there. But we know that that's not what happens. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that there's no school budget. I believe, and someone, please correct me if I'm wrong, that then we go to a two-town meeting.
I don't, I don't, I think Jeff will answer this.
That's a, that's a final step.
That's a final.
There would be-
Right.
One, one, twelve, yeah.
Just to, I don't know if it was 2011, 10, 11, 12, is when we tried an override that didn't pass here in Essex. And at that time, there was no next step. It was just accepted as is. This time around, you could, you could, it goes back to the school. The school decides what they want to do. They just want to live with what the level of budget was passed by Essex, reduce Manchester, or do they come back with something different, a lower amount? They could come back, we could have another town meeting in Essex. And if that didn't pass, there's one scenario where the school continues to operate on a 1/12 of the prior year budget until a new budget can pass.
Monthly, right, yeah.
And yes, you can get to a point where there is a joint town meeting where all the residents of Manchester and Essex get into one room. And yes, the town of Essex could be outvoted by the larger contingent in Manchester. I would say your district is, is in a dire position if that's where we end up.
Right, I agree.
So, yeah, it's, I, I would certainly hope we don't end up at that, at that point.
Thanks. I would challenge everyone to think about this not as a regional school district problem. I think that our school leaders have sharpened their pencils. I think that our school leaders have cut the fat. To me, listening to input from both of our member towns, it's very clear that this is a town budget problem. And I'd like to hear more conversation about how our town will solve a town budget problem.
I just, Kate, I'll do one, one for you. Pam, just, can you clarify how much revenue we get for school choices? Is it 7,500, is that right?
No, I think five thousand. Five thousand, and then incremental increases if they have additional services.
That's, yeah, that's where I was confused. Is it, what's the rough, like, what's the average? It's greater than five, it's less than 7,500?
Maybe like, yeah, around 7,500 maybe is the last number, that number.
Yeah, so Kate, so the way I did this, and maybe I've got it wrong, but when you look at the school budget, 19 million of 30, so 63, I'll try to answer, and then you can tell me why I'm wrong. And 19 million of 30 million is 63%, right? So 63% of the budget is related to more or less the operating expenses and not facilities. And so when you look at that relative to the cost per pupil, and I, and Pam, is it roughly 25,000 now, or 22? Where, where is it cost per pupil?
We don't have an official for the goal.
So Mark, none of these are relevant?
22, let's call it 22, I'm not positive.
Yeah, so 63 times 22, that's 14 million. So the, the, I'm just answering your question, that's all.
Like, well, it wasn't a question.
Okay, got it. Then I will-
I, I think, yeah, I think we might put an end to this unless we have other comments.
I just wanted to, in terms of Kate's question about sort of what is, what is the town doing? It's a town, you know, it's a town problem, what is the town doing? I mean, I just want to point out, as of my latest revision of the budget today, the town budget is going up less than 1.5%. So I don't know how much more we can do on the town side.
No, I think it's a revenue problem, Jeff. I don't bid for this, the-
Yeah, but I don't, I mean, like, what are your revenue solutions? I mean, like, we don't have a lot, I mean, Jody can speak to this quite a bit. There's not a lot of revenue options for us at, at the present time. You know, we've, we've brought in some new revenue over the last 10, 15 years in terms of meals tax and things like that, that, you know, frankly, that's what's allowed us to keep pace with the school budget. But we are not the type of town, as Sova mentioned earlier, we don't have a large business, you know, community. You know, we don't have a big section of town where we can put in a, a business park or something like that. So I, you know, we're always, I think, looking, I know Jody can speak to the EDC, is really looking at all kinds of avenues to bring in more money for the town, more revenue. You know, we have one coming online, if the, if the facility ever opens over by the ice cream store. But, you know, I don't know if that's, you know, more than, I don't know if that's $3,000 of revenue, you know, quite honestly. So, I mean, we're in a difficult position, but I certainly feel like on the town side of things, we are, you know, doing things, you know, to, to, you know, to keep things down on our, on our side. I mean, I can tell you, my, my budget's going down almost 14%. So, you know, we're doing what we can. I mean, it's, it's a structural problem for us.
And, and we're capped.
Annie, do you want to?
Is everyone else in? Sure, just want to-
Just to keep this moving.
Say, first of all, can I straighten this out? It's really bugging me. I want to move beyond this, but I want to address your question about private school. Because the private school word has been used at meetings, and it's, it's very upsetting because we don't want to be a private school. To be honest with you, we're better than a private school. We've had people come to the district and say, you should send your teachers to, what is the school that does dyslexia?
Landmark.
Landmark, because they should get trained there. Our public school teachers are better trained than private school teachers. Our public school teachers are trained to address the, the learning needs of whatever arrives, right? So, you know, my kids have all been very successful. They've not been Harvard successful. The Martin kids will never be that successful, but, um- Yeah, they're good people. But anyway, I, you know, public schools can produce great results, and they have.
So that was my, that's what I was trying to get across.
Yes.
Because I, I've always believed in education.
Yes, and I know that you all do.
But to hear that is very concerning.
Yes, but it's not coming from the school district.
Yeah.
You're hearing some people say people are leaving for private school. But the reality is that we're not trying to build a private school because we can't.
Go back and listen to the meeting.
I, I've heard it bandied about, and I don't like it.
I don't like it.
Yeah, and, and we're not trying to build a private school. But we have numbers that, that look like private schools do. Anyway, the, the revenue issue is a lot about this reserve use. So I guess I want to stop talking about where we are, how we got here, because I think we all have beaten that to death. You know, you're looking at what can we do in the next couple of weeks? Where are we going to see some savings? You're still working at it. Great. You might have some way to get to a number that's palatable. So we heard a number of seven something. What can we do to get that number to something that people can vote for? So I guess I just want to start talking about the practicality of this, because we, we're looking at an override. We've known it's been coming for at least four years because we've been using reserves to kind of help get the budget passed every year. So how do we get to the number that works? And that's the conversation I want to start having. You know, I do think we need to pass a school bu, a school building, but if you've got a crappy program, like, you know, I just, that's important too. So let's get to a number that we can, what is it? I don't know what that number is. So let's do some work on that and happy to help on that.
Teresa, do you want to get up?
Teresa Whitman, Eight Lufkin Street, Essex. I do serve on the school committee, but like Kate, I am speaking on my own behalf. And I just want to say, I've witnessed this, you know, I started paying close attention the year before. I was invited to run for school committee. I wouldn't say I chose to run for school committee, but I did do that the year that COVID hit. I was out getting signatures with my little wipes. The year before, that is, when I started paying attention, and we could, again, we could see this coming. And the, A, big concern for me has been the tone throughout the past few years and how as we're dealing with these very real issues in our town, it becomes contentious. And that's understandable because we're dealing with real problems that impact real people's lives on every side of this. Families that came here for their students and also seniors who want to stay in their homes and everyone in between, and I understand that. So my comment tonight is primarily to say that I came here with the expectation of having, of learning some more and reinforcing some of the learning that we've had, hearing answers to the questions that all of you have had, that I've heard in different meetings have been shared. Like I said, reinforcing that I, that I do understand what those answers are to be able to move, you know, my personal vote forward and my personal support for this forward. And so also procedurally, I am interested to know at this point, moving forward, in terms of timeframe, knowing that we have some work to do in terms of messaging, supporting, helping, helping this pass, if that's the case, what your timing would be in terms of the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen deciding whether or not you as boards are going to support this. And, and the reason I ask that is we did see two years ago what a difference it made. It was, it was a narrower margin, I think it was about 70, 30, I could be wrong on that, but a narrower margin for passing the school budget. But last year, as we got through the difficult time and then actually came to a point where boards felt like they could support it, we had a more productive and smoother process, which I think is a good, is good benefit for all of our citizens. And so in terms of understanding the timing, that's what I'm really interested in for support or not from the two boards that we're addressing here. And also just to consider and thank everyone, through these, these years, in those contentious times, it has gotten sometimes difficult to be neighbors with one another, and we are still neighbors. And all of us want the best for this town. This year, I have seen considerable effort put into building relationships back. It's not always still visible publicly in public meetings and everything, but I have seen hard work go into it by people on all sides, on all of these boards. And I'd like that to continue. It's really important to me that we recognize that this is, this town is not about pitting seniors versus students. That's not what we are here. We're problem-solving together. And so I just want to be clear that I, as an individual citizen, but also in my individual service for the school committee, am committed to doing that, to being problem solvers together. And I have seen progress with this. So that's my comment. If you have the ability to give me the timing on your votes to either support or not support this, so that we can move forward with our planning, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Well, I can take a stab at answering that because I think there's a relationship between Teresa's question and Annie's point. So I think it's actually a two-part question. Do you support the override as we've just been talking about it tonight and defined it in terms of the increase? Yes or no? And if the answer is no, what is the number that we can collectively support? I think, I think that's the work that needs to be done. We are meeting on Monday with the, with the Board of Selectmen, and we talked about meeting before that. So, because our meeting is at 8:00, so meeting at 7:00. And I think that's a fair question to ask. Both of them.
Is it too late for follow-up?
You, go ahead. Open dialogue here.
I shouldn't have sat down, I suppose. So I guess that, I, I should have been more clear.
I know time is of the essence.
Time is of the essence.
I know you're meeting on the 21st, is it?
We are, but it's of essence for you guys too and for our other town partner. So I guess part of my question that was embedded that I wasn't clear about was, at what point are you as a finance committee going to make a final recommendation on how to handle this, recognizing that there are different ways you all could choose to structure this? I haven't, unless I missed a public vote on this is the absolute way we're going to move forward with this yet. What would the timing be for you guys to make a decision, make that recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, so that we can understand the support?
Yeah, and quite, quite frankly, this conversation tonight is, you know, a major input in terms of having that dialogue.
Okay.
I don't even know the answer, so.
That's, okay, that's an answer. I don't know. Thank you, okay. All right, fair enough. Well, I'll pay attention and look out for it. Thank you.
All right, thanks. I haven't, I haven't asked people on the, online. I know it's getting late, but I don't want people to be forgotten. So any comments that anybody would like to make, dialed in? Okay? I'll take that as a no. All right, I, I know it's late. Pam, Avi, thank you so much. And also, thank everybody, I want to thank everybody here just for being engaged in the great questions and comments. So I will make a motion to adjourn of the Essex Finance Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? You want to?
Aye.
I'm staying a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.